Mr. Mayor, it is now 7:00 P. M.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this Monday night, April 18th, regular City Council meeting. I'm now going to call this meeting to order. Everybody, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all, please be seated. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Gothols.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pappan.
Here.
And Mayor Bonilla.
Here. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Due to the health worries in place currently, we're holding meetings remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. When public comment is announced for the item you wish to comment on, you can raise your hand. You use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom, and if you called in, uh, I'm sorry, I seem to have lost my place. When public comments announced for the item you wish to comment on, use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom, and you'll be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press 9 or Raise Your Hand to raise your hand, and when called upon, press *6 to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. So tonight, we're going to open with our ceremonial items. The first item is Observance of Ramadan, and I have here recognition of the Observance of Ramadan, which I'm now going to read. Whereas Ramadan commenced the evening of April 1st, 2022, and lasts through the month of April, and whereas Ramadan is the holy month of fasting and spiritual renewal for Muslims worldwide, and is observed with faithful intention, communal prayer, and reading of the Holy Quran scripture, and whereas this past year, local mosques and Islamic centers have made great sacrifices in suspending nonessential gatherings, and recommend them for continuing to support our community by adapting communal prayer and religious services to meet state and county health and safety standards, and whereas Muslims are a part of the fabric of our community, and the city of San Mateo sends their warmest regards to Muslims across the Bay Area, and now therefore, I, Rick Bonilla, Mayor of the city of San Mateo, on behalf of myself and on behalf of the City Council, hereby recognize the commencement of Ramadan. Ramadan Mubarak. Be it further resolved that the city of San Mateo acknowledges the onset of Ramadan and expresses its deepest respect to Muslims across California and throughout the world on this significant occasion. So now I'm going to introduce Samina Usman from the Council on American, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Council on American Islamic Relations. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you so much for having me, and also thank you so much for the beautiful proclamation. We truly appreciate the solidarity that the city of San Mateo has with the Muslim community for recognizing, you know, that this, this special holiday. And it's really interesting that, you know, Ramadan falls on, this is truly an auspicious time of year where we have numerous religious traditions and their holidays coinciding, you know, in addition to, we have Passover and Easter, and also, and apologies for the pronunciation for these names, but Vastakai for the Sikhs, Pele Vas, I'm sorry. We have traditions from the Bengali community, from the Hindu community, they have their New Year, and so I'm, it, it shows how auspicious this, this time of year is, and, you know, Ramadan is, is very near and dear to my heart, is a time for reflection, for prayer, for recognizing how grateful we are to have, you know, we, we're fasting for the whole month from sunrise to sunset, but at least, you know, we know where our meal is coming from, but there's so many millions of people around the world that, that don't have such a luxury, so it really reinforces how, how we have so many things to be grateful for. And so it's a beautiful time of year to spend with friends and family, and so, and this is also extended to the City Council as well. So I really appreciate this recognition, and Ramadan Mubarak to you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Usman. We really appreciate your presence. Have a great night. Okay, now we are going to move on to the second ceremonial item, for which I'm going to pass the baton over to Deputy Mayor Diane Pappan.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the opportunity to be able to read this resolution commemorating the life of Andy Kreske, who I had the chance to get to know after marrying our former colleague, Maureen. So, um, please allow me to read it. Commending Andrew Anthony Kreske for his 82 years of making the world a wonderful place. Whereas Andrew Andy Kreske passed away peacefully on his 82nd birthday after a life well-lived, and whereas Andy is survived by his devoted and beloved wife of six years, our former mayor, Maureen, Mayor and Councilmember Maureen Prescott, he met Maureen at a golf tournament in August of 2011, when she was running for San Mateo City Council. They were inseparable from that point on, and were married at the Peninsula Golf and Country Club on December 5 of 2015. And whereas Andy was the proud and inspirational father of Lisa Christensen, the caring and much-loved father-in-law John Christensen, and stepfather of Nicole Pabuta Aquino Miguel, uh, wait, the son of Nicole Pabuta Aquino Miguel, Kristen Pabuta Iwata Nick, and the loving grandfather of Nicholas Christensen, Anthony Christensen, and step-grandson Carson Iwata, all of whom adored him. And whereas Andy was devoted to his wonderful family and friends, and was a constant source of strength, support, inspiration, guidance, and unconditional love to all whose lives he touched. He had a huge heart, always lending a helping hand, giving so much, and never asking for anything in return. And whereas Andy was a self-made man, born and raised in San Francisco, a graduate of Heald College, and served in the Air Force Reserve, he went on to work for Sunstream Homes and Standard Building Company as a draftman and architect, and ended up, and ended his successful career as the president of the company, retiring in 1992 at age 52. And whereas he was always an avid community member on the Peninsula, and following retirement, his service compounded, serving on numerous boards, including over 40 years on the board of the Carl Geller and Celia Berta Geller Foundation, several terms on the Sequoia Hospital Foundation, the Board of Trustees for Notre Dame Denimuri University, and the Board of Regents for St. Patrick Seminary and University. And as a patriot who deeply loved his country, he was proud to support the Wounded Warrior Project, and in the city of San Mateo, the Fallen Heroes Memorial, and San Mateo Police Activity. And whereas a natural-born leader, brilliant financial strategist, and amazing mentor, Andy was a behind-the-scenes mover and shaker, who leaves a legacy of excellence and incomparable professional and personal accomplishments. He had an extensive list of interests, some practical and some pure pleasure. He was a financial wizard and an accomplished investor, watching business reports, stock market activity, and tracking investments, a talented cook who loved to share his signature dishes, a gardener with an amazing green thumb, an avid golfer and sportsman who followed every sport. He was a 49er season ticket holder for 50 years, music lover from country to Italian classics to Elvis, and he especially loved to travel, especially his favorite were those with the whole family, fishing in Alaska, or visiting the Hawaiian Islands, reading a good book on the beach, enjoying a cocktail and soaking up the sun. And whereas Andy took life as it came, facing forward and always accentuating the positive, strong, independent man who took great pride in his Italian heritage, and whose Catholic faith sustained him throughout his life. He was outgoing, enjoyed the gift of gab, and was always the life of the party. He loved socializing, and his keen sense of humor kept people laughing and entertained, comfortable in any setting, and he especially enjoyed entertaining at home. And whereas Andy held an important place in the lives and hearts of his family and friends, he was an inspiration to all who knew him, and he will be sorely and deeply missed, also for his community spirit. And now therefore, this council does hereby confer upon Anthony, oh, excuse me, Andrew Anthony Kreske, its highest commendation for the manner in which he has lived his life, and for the incredible legacy he leaves behind. And this was adopted by each of us, so thank you all for the support, and we will make sure that Maureen gets a wonderful copy of this to keep on behalf of the memory of her husband, Andy. So thank you for allowing me the opportunity to read.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Pappan. Now we're on to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, would you please read the consent calendar?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number three, City Council Meeting Minutes Approval. Item number four, Ordinance Adoption Sign Code Amendments. Item number five, Remote Teleconference City Council and Commission Meetings Reauthorization. Item number six, U.S. 101 State Route 92 Area Improvement Multimodal Project. Item number seven, On-Call Traffic Engineering Data Collection Services Amendment. Item number eight, Wastewater Treatment Plant Immediate Action Projects, Package II Amendment. Item number nine, Rudder Truck and VAC Con Truck Purchase Contracts. Item number 10, Program for Arterial System Synchronization Fiscal Year 2021/22 Funding Agreement. Item number 11, Central Park Seasonal Ice Ring Agreement. Item number 12, San Mateo Public Library Foundation Operating Lease Amendment. Item number 13, San Mateo City Employees Association Memorandum of Understanding Amendment. Item number 14, General Fund Unassigned Fund Balance Commitment Approval. And item number 15, the Mackey-Michelson Arthritis and Rehabilitation Center Therapy Pool Resolution and Support.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. At this time, I'd like to ask if there's any member of the council who would like to pull any of these items for discussion. Seeing none, then I will ask if there's any member of the public who would wish to comment on any of these items. Please raise your hand now to make a comment, and this is for consent calendar items only. Madam Clerk, do we have any commenters?
Yes, yes, it appears we do. Mr. Mayor, if I call on Mike Schrader, please.
Counsel, appreciate your consideration on item, item 15 of the consent calendar. I'm one of the many hundreds of people who's lost use of the Mackey-Michelson Pool, and basically been bedridden for two years and suffered greatly from it. It's our hope that we can get every city in the region to pass this resolution, asking Sutter Health to reconsider its position. Sutter Health has recently been declared during a meeting of the Peninsula Healthcare District where it's, it's only public exposure, and to get a chance to find out what they want, that they're moving entirely to an acute care modality, which is kind of surprising for a nonprofit hospital organization. They have, according to the records of the Peninsula Healthcare District, in the last 15 years, they've dropped 23 significant public programs. They're primarily based on outpatient chronic care quality-of-life issues. The pool is just the tip of the iceberg. They've closed their bariatric program, they've closed their cardiac rehab, physical therapy patient, and occupational therapy program, they've closed their integrative medicine program, they've closed their outpatient diabetes program, they've closed post-physical therapy, post-stroke, many, many programs that benefit the community where in their, their requirement to, the community as a nonprofit to give back, in exchange for their tax exempt status, they in fact are doing just the opposite. They've been closing programs, basically for what all to be determined is to make more money, which is hard to understand for a nonprofit. They currently sit on an asset value of cash that they've collected over the years of $7.8 billion, North California-wide. We're not sure what to do with that money, but they're closing all the programs that are vital to most people who are aging and/or have disabilities, and as we all grow older, we're going to find that many of the services we used to expect from healthcare are not going to be there, and we're going to be inviting all the cities, especially San Mateo, because that's where the pool is, to look at what is going on in healthcare. Both Sutter and Dignity Healthcare has said they're getting out of the chronic care outpatient programs, so we will send you this list of the many programs they've dropped, but we're going to have to start planning long-term. And as the city has, the city has a number of programs under the Age Friendly Program from the World Health Organization, in this month of aging and elderly. The city has various programs where they, they've provided services, but they're going to have to consider additional to backfill these issues. Sutter's business can walk away from them without consequence, and unfortunately, this pool is only one of many items, and you'll be hearing from hundreds of people over the years who lost services that need them badly, that are going to rely on the county and local services to backfill what Sutter's done. So please pass this resolution, we'll be in communications about the other issues, but Sutter has failed in its obligation to community as a nonprofit healthcare organization. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schrader. And since Mr. Schrader's comments were in strong support of our resolution, I think the mayor is now looking for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second. Moved and second and approved. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Gothols.
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla.
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pappan.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Now is the time for a public comment for items which are not on tonight's agenda. So let me say that next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on tonight's agenda may address the City Council at this time. State law prevents council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may refer to staff for follow-up. Public comment is limited to a total of 15 minutes, however, an opportunity for additional public comment may be provided later in the agenda if needed. Madam Clerk, do we have any public commenters?
If there's any members of the public who wanted to speak, we have one hand raised right now for Lori and Sean. Oh, um, they have an older version of Zoom. Let me, let me go ahead and go on to Gustavo Hornos, and I'll try and work with them to be able to comment.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hornos, I did see the letter you sent in earlier, if that's what you're going to talk about, we will be covering that item later in the agenda tonight.
Great, yes, that's the reason. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very, if there's something else you want to comment about, then please go ahead.
I will keep it for later at the right time. Appreciate your help.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hornos.
Thank you.
Okay, that said then, any other public commenters?
Let me try and get Lori and Sean. They're going to have to join as a panelist.
Okay, I see you there. Please go ahead. We have to unmute. We cannot hear you. There you go. Try talking now. Oh, we can't hear you. Sorry, Madam Clerk, is there something we can do to help him?
I, it's not on this end.
Okay. Are you thinking you're going to be able to be heard? You're going to your other computer, okay. Mr. Schrader, you might want to lower your hand, please, since you've already commented. Thank you.
Also, you could call in and give comments over the phone if that would work easier for you.
Okay.
While he's connecting, perhaps Mike Schrader still has his hand up. Did he have a different comment?
Mr. Schrader, do you have other comments?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, please.
I, I believe the city has an elderly commission or a senior.
Senior commission, yes.
Senior commission. Maybe it would be the time for us to go ahead and present this, this item on, it isn't just the pool that was, we've already discussed. There's many programs that seniors are going to need, and we'd be willing to work with the commission to submit a view of it, but I think that in terms of the time from recognition of the problem of the lack of services that are needed to implement in them, for instance, one of the things we consider is are there surplus properties where chronic care can be offered? I'll give you an example, the VA has in Palo Alto, a comprehensive chronic care for traumatic brain injury that has one facility, it has occupational therapy, physical therapy, it has one of the warm water pools, it has a number of items that are integrated into a single location that allow veterans to receive care for a number of chronic ongoing problems for quality of life that obviously continue to deteriorate as they grow over. And so perhaps it's not a, I understand this is just public comment, we can't respond to it, but maybe it's time to have the commission look at some of the issues that are going on. Just being an age-friendly city is not sufficient, and I've become concerned over time about all the other conditions that I might have and others might not, not dealt with. So we'd like to propose that they look at.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader. It looks like our other commenter is ready, you've already had significant public comment.
Thank you.
If you, if you want, if you want to, if you want to, she can, or else you can send in some other communication.
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you very much. So now, it looks like, Sean, are you available?
Um, Sean, I need you to only have one Zoom meeting running, we were getting significant feedback, so you have to close the first one you were on before you unmute yourself, okay?
Is that working?
There we are, we're good.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Counsel. My name's Sean Leong, and I'm one of the owners and family members of Aw Sam Flowers in San Mateo. For the last four months, we've been working amongst ourselves and with others in the communities, trying to look at how we can utilize our property at 2635 Palm Place for low-income housing. As you know, we've been in the, the community for, the business has been up and running for 89 years, so we're pretty well vested in our community. So I've been following for the last 30 years the development around our, our property and our business, and I've noticed that we need to explore the, the options that are available for a higher density to allow for the lower-income type housing that we'd like to facilitate, because many of us.
It sounds like it's talking about land use, which we will be discussing under another item in, in a very short period of time. I believe it is indeed the next item that we'll be talking about. If you're talking about the land use designation for your site, is that what you're talking about? Mr. Leong, you have to unmute yourself.
Sorry, we're, we're not, we're usually face-to-face doing business and not through Zoom, so this is very difficult for us. I'm sorry if I'm premature, but I just wanted to make sure before I lost the opportunity, just, I'll be contacting the council with a letter, some ideas, but I just wanted to make sure it was set up that there are opportunities for the city and our family to see what we can do.
Thank you very much. Okay, if there are no other public commenters, Madam Clerk?
I have no other hands raised.
Okay, good. Then we will close the public comment and move on to the next item on tonight's agenda, which is old business. Item 16, General Plan Update Selection of the Preferred Land Use and Circulation Scenario. I think we have a presentation from our Community Development Department.
Yes, good evening, Counsel. Mayor Bonilla, my name is Zachary Dahl, Deputy Director with the city's Community Development Department. Are you able to hear me all right?
Yes.
Excellent. So I'm very excited to present this next phase of our General Plan Update, which is the preferred scenario selection of our land use and circulation alternatives. What we are looking at before you this evening is the culmination of our Alternatives Evaluation Process, which, which was started more than a year ago, and now we are here to seek your input and recommendation on which land use and circulation scenario goes into our general plan. Before I get started, I did want to acknowledge the team that is supporting the General Plan Update effort. We have our core team, which is comprised of staff from Community Development and Public Works. We have our Technical Advisory Committee, which includes over 40 staff members from all city departments and the city's Consolidated Fire Department, and then we also have our team of consultants, which is led by Placeworks. Next slide. So for tonight's meeting, as I noted, we are looking for a, ultimately, a recommendation from the City Council on the preferred land use and circulation scenarios that go into our general plan. And so this will, you'll start by receiving an update on what has transpired to get you to this point, receive public comment, and then transition into discussion and ultimately recommendation on the preferred scenario. Specifically for tonight's agenda, we will start with a presentation that provides an overview of our Alternatives Evaluation Technical Report, the recommendations and feedback provided by our General Plan Subcommittee, and ultimately, the recommendation from our Planning Commission, which happened just this past month. We'll then make ourselves available for clarifying questions that the council may have, move to public comment, both verbal and then also acknowledging all of the written comments that have been coming in in the lead-up to tonight's meeting. Then we'll bring it back for discussion and direction on a preferred circulation scenario, and then a preferred land use scenario. And for the land use scenario, we are, we are recommending that the council go study area by study area, as there is a lot of different nuances to cover, and that appears to be the most effective way to move that discussion through, and we'll provide a little bit more detail on our recommended approach for that toward the end of our presentation. Then our next steps, once we receive your recommendation, will be to bring this back to the planning, to the City Council in July, to confirm the land use map that is going into the general plan. So we'll start with a brief overview of the project. The General Plan Update was initiated back in 2018, and it started with the development of the vision statement and the core values that are guiding the General Plan Update, and this vision statement and values were developed with extensive community outreach at the onset of the General Plan Update process. Where are we and what is next? What we are looking at right now is really the culmination of our Alternatives Evaluation Process, and as soon as we wrap this stage up, we will be moving on to the development of our goals, policies, and actions that go into each element of the general plan, which will be moving into the summer and fall, and then we'll be moving into the full preparation of the draft general plan, as well as the Environmental Impact Report, with a target of having the general plan ready for council consideration and adoption by the end of 2023. We are also noting the housing element timeline below, as it is an element in the general plan, but based on state law, and as you are likely aware, it is on a slightly different timeline, and will be adopted ahead of the overall general plan update. I did also want to note upcoming opportunities for the council to receive updates and provide direction and input on the general plan update. That includes this summer, when we bring back our, the preferred land use scenario for confirmation, two council meetings this fall to discuss and receive direction on our goals, policies, and actions, and then five more meetings between the draft and adoption hearings in 2023, and then ultimately culminating in, in consideration of a final general plan for adoption at the end of 2023. So at this point, we are moving into our alternatives, an overview of our alternatives process, and I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to. So at this point, um, we are moving into our alternatives, an overview of our alternatives process, and I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Joanna Jansen with Placeworks. We'll pick up the presentation from here.
Thank you so much, Zach. I'm Joanna Jansen. As Zach said, I'm a principal with Placeworks. We're the lead consultant on a team of experts helping the city with the general plan update, and I'm delighted to be with you tonight. Thank you very much. Uh, I want to start by explaining the significance of the land use alternatives and the process that we've been going through. This process um is ultimately intended to arrive at updates to the city's general plan land use map, which is one very important piece of the general plan because of the designations or the different colors that you see on this map uh determine what can be built in San Mateo where and at what intensity. So the general plan land use map should plays a very strong role in shaping the future of San Mateo. And this alternatives process is our way of exploring different possible changes to that map as part of the overall general plan update. These maps show the three land use alternatives that we have developed over a multi-year process with extensive community involvement and check-ins with the council along the way. We're going to be talking about these in more depth um as we as part of your discussion later tonight. Um, but this just shows the map side by side, showing that all three alternatives are built on the same building blocks of ten study areas, which are the areas that you see um in the different colors on this map. These area, these three alternatives, alternatives explore a range of possible land use changes within those ten study areas. Uh, in some cases, such as alternative B, that looked at a future that kind of spreads medium density development more evenly throughout the ten study areas, as contrasted, for example, to alternative C, which focused on keeping densities low in some areas in order to concentrate higher densities in central study areas around transit uh and along the spine of El Camino Real. It's important to understand that areas of San Mateo outside of these ten study areas, and indeed all of the land within San Mateo city limits, will be covered by the general plan and the general plan land use map, uh, and could potentially change during the life of the general plan over the next twenty years. The three, the colors on the maps that you just saw translate into different amounts of development among the three alternatives. This table shows you the anticipated residential build out, new population and new jobs under each one of the three alternatives. You can see that they primarily differ in the amount of residential development. Alternative A is our lowest uh residential development alternative, alternative with about eleven thousand eight hundred new units. Alternative B is in the middle of the range with about sixteen thousand new units. And alternative C was the highest of the three of draft alternatives that we developed at about twenty one thousand new units. This table also shows that all three alternatives have a similar amount of new job growth, adding about fifteen thousand new jobs to San Mateo uh over the life of the general plan. And when we talk about those numbers, here's a couple of caveats we just wanted to share to help provide some context. The the land use designations in the general plan establish development capacity, and as I said, they play a very important role in determining what can and cannot be built in San Mateo, uh, but they're certainly not the only mechanism for change in San Mateo. Um, and for that reason, we did not assume one hundred percent redevelopment of every single parcel in every single study area. We know that some of these parcels will remain the same, while others would be expected to be developed. Whether or when the redevelopment happens depends in part on the city regulation, but also depends greatly on market conditions and property owner decisions. And so therefore, we would expect that the amount and extent of redevelopment could vary significantly by study area and by alternative. In addition to the land use alternatives, we also prepared three circulation alternatives so that we can consider important decisions about both land use and transportation at the same time as we go through this process. The circulation alternatives are not broken down by study area because we really want to consider the transportation network as a uh cohesive holistic citywide system. All of the circulation alternatives assume the pedestrian and bicycle improvements that are consistent with existing adopted city planning documents. Um, and would include improvements that are already in place, like the B Street Pedestrian Mall, for example. And any of the circulation alternatives could be tailored to fit the preferred land use alternative. So just briefly walking through what those circulation alternatives are. Alternative A prioritizes walkability and pedestrian corridors, including focusing pedestrian improvements at challenging intersections, traffic calming and safety improvements near highway onramps, and maintaining the city's pedestrian focus downtown. Circulation alternative B focuses more on transit and regional connections rather than pedestrian improvements, and would strive to increase and improve transit access to major connections, including adding east-west transit connections to the Hillsdale Caltrain Station and prioritize dedicated HOV and bus lanes and BRT improvements along El Camino Real. Alternative C, uh, circulation alternative C would combine both the local and regional improvements in alternatives A and B to create a pedestrian focus space downtown, uh, and also includes uh acknowledgement of technology and other concepts like on-demand ride share services. Um, the reason uh to be, one thing to be aware about circulation alternative C is that as we seek to maximize the different users who are prioritized uh within a a given roadway, we often find that we have to make trade-offs uh to fit different uses into a finite right of way. So alternative C would likely have the greatest need to make decisions about trade-offs for roadway users between things like transit, bicycles, pedestrian, parking, uh, and other things that other users that would all be seeking to use the same roadway. Alternative C also includes what we call the super block concept modeled on um these kinds of changes that have happened in Barcelona and other European cities. That's really focused on reusing public space for walking, biking, dining and gathering rather than for moving vehicles. It would really focus on narrowing the roadway to allow for one-way, one-lane vehicle access and reallocating that space that's no longer being used by vehicles for an enhanced public realm. Here's some pictures of what that might look like. This uh image shows a a single lane of vehicles moving through the area uh on this side, while this, what used to be a travel lane, has been converted for biking or walking adjacent to a sidewalk dining. And here's another image um showing a similar type of um change in the roadway. It's really important to understand the housing element in relationship to this process. As Zach said, the housing element has been going on in parallel with the general plan, uh, and we're working closely with that team to make sure that the two efforts remain aligned and consistent with each other. The housing element is required to identify sites to accommodate seven thousand and fifteen new units uh plus a buffer that would be uh able to be accommodated in the years twenty twenty three to twenty thirty one. Except for study area one north, all of the study areas have sites that have been identified by the draft housing element as housing opportunity sites. And all of those housing opportunity sites are designated in the three land use alternatives to allow multifamily housing at the existing density or at a higher density. Uh, and it's important to understand that we are uh being observant of this number. This is the regional housing needs allocation number or RENA, the seven thousand and fifteen units. So because it's developed through extensive state and regional methodology that reflects things like job growth and employment demand, as well as housing affordability, overcrowding, and a number of other factors. So um this number has come to us uh with from from the region, and this is what we're legally required to accommodate in the housing element. So all three alternatives do that. And in addition, uh, the housing element is a very important opportunity for the city to address affirmatively furthering fair housing, uh, which means making sure that um the city is providing for a a fair and uh equitable housing that addresses past patterns of segregation, if any. So that is an important part of the housing element that the general plan is going to continue to coordinate with. Another effort that's going on at the city wide scale right now is called objective design standards. The city is working on objective design standards for multifamily um projects with a target for adopting these standards at the end of this year in twenty twenty two. Uh, objective means that these standards are quantifiable and measurable by reference to an external source. So things like, instead of saying it needs to have lots of windows, they will say things like, you know, at least twenty percent of the facade must be um transparent so that uh projects can know whether or not they are consistent with city standards. These will replace adopted design guidelines and specific plans that will be developed based on community engagement. And as we work through the general plan, we're going to be revise revising um design and character related policies to make sure that we're aligning with these updated objective design standards. Uh, following the development of the standards for multifamily housing, the city anticipates developing similar objective design standards for single-family projects as well. Measure Y is a very important factor in all of this that we've considered from the start and and updated uh following the passage of measure Y uh as a ballot measure that was uh passed by San Mateo voters in November twenty twenty. This retained the height and density limits originally for well, that were formerly in place by measure P and has a sunset date of twenty thirty. So measure Y height limits include a a fifty-five feet limit and a density limit up to fifty dwelling units per acre with some exceptions and some cir- under some circumstances. Uh, and it's not um state density bonus law does allow for that to be exceeded when affordable units are provided. So alternatives um A is consistent with measure Y. Alternatives B and C do both include some land use designations that would exceed the height and density limits that are set by measure Y. Any components uh that are part of the, that are ultimately part of the adopted general plan based on the plan that the city council adopts at the end of this process would uh require voter approval before those measures could take effect. I also wanted to take just a couple of slides here to talk a little bit about environmental justice because we have received some questions about this uh as we took the alternatives and its evaluation through the process with the GPS and the planning commission. Environmental justice is the concept under California state law that uh certain communities in throughout California bear a historic burden of pollution as well as socioeconomic disadvantages that combine to create exceptionally disproportionately unhealthy conditions in those communities. And a law was passed called SB one thousand that is intended to address this issue by requiring communities to include environmental justice in general plans as a new requirement. Uh, so when uh communities have particular areas that experience this combination of burdens, SB one thousand calls those disadvantaged communities. Uh, and in the fall of last year, uh, the state tool, one of the most important state tools that's used for tracking this issue um was updated with new data and new methodology that uh concluded that there is a disadvantaged community in San Mateo, uh, and it's the north central area shown in the darkest orange color on this map. Uh, so we will be addressing environmental justice as part of the general plan update. And it, what that means is that for the communities that are experiencing these disproportionate burdens, the general plan is going to be required to look at ways that we can reduce pollution exposure and uh improve public facilities, healthy food access, safe and sanitary homes, uh, and access to physical activity. And of course, we want to be uh very intentional about engaging the community in the conversations about how we can accomplish those things and what their experiences and their needs are, listen to what they have to say, and then prioritize improvements and programs that can address the needs in the disadvantaged communities in San Mateo. Um, a part of our work on this will be driven by the ideas and concepts in the SB one thousand implementation toolkit, um, which was released back in twenty seventeen with my firm Placeworks as a co-author uh with the California Environmental Justice Alliance, and that remains an important resource for us in guiding this work. Specifically, some of the next steps that we plan to undertake to address environmental justice include targeted outreach to residents of these communities to discuss policy solutions that might be most relevant, most needed there. Uh, and then to create goals, policies, and actions for community review and incorporate the data uh about impulsion and socioeconomic factors in these areas, as well as the goals and policies into the draft general plan that will ultimately come back to this council. So with that, uh, having provided a little bit of context, let me move on to the alternatives evaluation that we prepared for the land use and circulation alternatives. We um released a report of early close to the beginning of this year that looked at uh a number of different topics that are very important to the community. Uh, you can see some of those listed here on the slide. This is not a complete list, but you have it um in your packet. For some of these um topics, uh, you know, we did not try to identify necessarily um pros and cons, but just to compare the alternatives to a similar set of 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 data and information for each one of these topics. Um, before I dive into that in too much more detail, though, I also just want to take a a pause and remind all of us that the general plan is a very powerful and very important tool, but it is not the only tool uh that San Mateo has to um shape the future of development and conservation in San Mateo. General plan, in addition to the land use alternatives that we're going to be talking about very intensively tonight, the general plan will be filled with a range of policies and actions uh that will regulate development and guide city uh decision-making. There are many other city plans and regulations outside of the general plan itself, including the zoning code and the climate action plan and the capital improvement plan and the city's annual budget um that are going to affect the future of San Mateo. There are other agencies like Cal Water or transit agencies or the school district that are very important partners. Uh, and then, of course, as I mentioned already, private property owners um and the role of private development uh will also play an important role in what happens in San Mateo in the next twenty years. So with that said, let's um return to the conclusions and the findings of the alternatives evaluation report. Uh, one of the topics that we talked a lot about is water supply. Obviously, given our existing drought situation, this is a very significant concern for many folks in the community. Um, so what we did is take a look at the, what's called the Urban Water Management Plan of Cal Water. The city does not supply its own water, but gets water from Cal Water, which is a separate agency. And that agency is required to prepare an urban water management plan, looking out to see what kinds of demand and supply it expects um over the next decades. Cal Water works to carefully um calibrate water supply to expected demand. And in order to do that, it consults the planning documents, both of our regional government um planning agency at ABAG, and also the local um agencies, including the city of San Mateo. So the next update of the Urban Water Management Plan will draw on the projections that we developed for this general plan update. Uh, and the Urban Water Management Plan will also reference future conservation measures um and higher efficiency that is expected to be part of new development based on existing um building codes that were not in place uh when a lot of the development on the ground today was was built. So we do know that um while the the existing urban water management plan that I referenced on this document um is was not based on the amount of demand that we're considering under any of the three land use alternatives. So all three of the land use alternatives, the growth under those, exceed the projections that are currently being used by Cal Water for their urban water management plan. So this urban water management plan um that was adopted in twenty twenty does not identify supplies that would be available for all three of the land use alternatives. For that reason, uh, in addition to continuing to work with Cal Water, we need to make sure that the goals, policies, and actions of the general plan uh continue to address water supply, whether that's through increased conservation, decreased consumption, um, the city again does not buy its own or does not provide rather its own water. And so ongoing partnership and communication with Cal Water is going to be very important in helping Cal Water to address region-wide water supply deficiencies. Um, we know that water supply fluctuates, given wet and dry years of Californians, we're all familiar with that. Um, and that's why urban water management plans are are updated every five years to make sure that they can reflect current conditions and align supply with demand. Another very um pressing issue over the life of this general plan will be sea level rise. There are various scenarios out there for how much uh and where sea level rise will affect. Um, this map on this slide shows um various scenarios for sea level rise affecting the eastern parts of San Mateo. The colors up here are actually for wildfire hazards. Um, so these pink and green colors show um different scenarios by twenty fifty and twenty one hundred. And as you can see, a number of the study areas are anticipated to be affected by sea level rise. To proactively address these potential impacts, the city is already working with regional, state, and federal partners, including through um a new flood and sea level rise resiliency agency called One Shoreline um uh here in San Mateo County uh through the construction of the North Shoreview Levy and Pump Station Improvement Project to provide flood protection to North Shoreview resident. here in San Mateo County, uh, through the construction of North Shoreview Levy and Pump Station Improvement Project to provide flood protection to North Shoreview residents. Uh, and also through the design of the new wastewater treatment plant, which is uh would provide protection to that facility from the one hundred year base flood and up to three point four feet of sea level rise. We've also um talked a lot about jobs housing balance, and this is addressed in detail in the alternatives evaluation. If you like to refer to that for more information, jobs housing balance is a comparison of how um how the local economy provides jobs for the local um labor force. And this is important because if there are not jobs in a community, then people have to commute out to work. And if there are much more jobs than housing in a community, then workers have to commute in to come to work. And all of both of those patterns can lead to traffic congestion and the related air quality and GHG and noise um problems. So we looked at not jobs to housing units, but jobs to employed residents in San Mateo. And this slide shows the balance, the existing balance in twenty nineteen of the number of jobs in San Mateo to the number of people in who live in San Mateo and have jobs is about one point oh seven in twenty nineteen. This would uh increase under alternative A and B slightly, meaning there would be more jobs than housing uh and slightly go slightly below one in alternative C being slightly more um housing or employed residents rather than jobs. Throughout this process, we've been very intent on listening carefully to community input. So let me share some of what we've heard. When we talked to the community about um the preferred land use scenario, we consistently heard that people are interested in adding both jobs and housing near transit, increasing housing diversity throughout the city, increasing housing densities, balancing new housing and preservation. Some folks who want to keep the height limits as is. A lot of interest in increasing affordable housing options. One way of doing that might be to redevelop shopping centers. But regardless of whether people want to increase housing densities or prefer not to increase housing densities, we definitely heard consistent message that parks and community space are very important to San Mateo residents and need to be um uh integrated into new development so that the city can maintain a high level of amenities and uh opportunity for cultural and community gathering spaces. We conducted an online exercise to gather input on the range of land use alternatives and the um circulation alternatives. And uh, this slide presents the results. We got four hundred and four total responses. This is an online survey. It's not scientific. It's not statistically um significant. It's not uh necessarily uh calibrated to be representative of the population. We did have a a way of trying to limit responses from uh individual IP address. But this, these are the results that we got. The majority of survey respondents preferred circulation alternative C followed closely by circulation alternative A and much more distantly by alternative B. For land use alternatives, we had a hundred and twenty one responses who preferred land use alternative A. About half of that preferred alternative C and um land use alternative B was the least preferred. Uh, as I noted, this wasn't a a scientific survey. This is optional online exercise uh in our uh demographics, the voluntary demographics that people offered for this survey result. We did note that um people who identified as homeowners over fifty and white were higher uh as percentages of these respondents than of San Mateo as a whole. Uh, in order to provide that statistically significant um insight, the city did also commission a community opinion survey at the same time as we had our land use alternatives evaluation open for community input. Um, and that was a statistically reliable survey conducted in early in twenty twenty two. The sample size looked at seven hundred and seventy five San Mateo residents. It was administered in both English and Spanish uh in January and February. And those results indicated that um about two thirds of the residents uh that were surveyed felt that there's too little housing that's affordable to middle income and low income families. When asked to prioritize among the list of factors that the city should consider as it plans for additional housing units, people ninety eight percent said that adequate water supplies are at least somewhat important. Preserving open space and creating new parklands was important by ninety for ninety seven percent of respondents. Minimizing vehicle um trips and traffic congestion was important to ninety five percent of respondents and creating pedestrian friendly areas was important to ninety four percent of respondents. So um by comparison, when compared to the other items that the survey tested, respondents indicated that keeping building heights low is is less of an important factor. And minimizing the number of new units adding to single family neighborhoods were were less of the least important factors when planning for the future of housing in the city. Um, and when presented with the option for uh reserving more land for parks, recreation areas and community amenities, sixty three percent of residents indicated that they would support concentrating new housing in higher density buildings downtown and new and near transit, potentially up to twelve stories in exchange for being able to preserve land for those other units. About sixty eight percent indicated that they would support building up to eight stories, so a little bit of a range there. And then one other very important support, um, a source rather of input for us throughout this process has been a specific request from property owners and those continue to come in even up to today. So this slide just provides a an overview and we're happy to come back to this slide as we go through your discussion. Uh, and in addition to that, uh, later this evening, as you're going through your discussion, study area by study area, we do have these requests connected with each study area to as a reminder. So um at the end of the presentation here, I just want to go over the um general plan subcommittee input and the planning commission input that we have received. The general plan subcommittee, just as a reminder, um is a group that was established specifically to support this general plan update as its name implies. We have two council members and two planning commission, planning commissioners who serve on that body as well as representatives from other local boards and commissions in order to provide uh a diverse sounding board for us to test um different ideas and concepts as we go through the general plan process and for us to help make sure that we're doing everything we can to engage the community. So that's the role of the general plan subcommittee or the GPS. Uh, and let me tell you first about their um ideas about the preferred circulation scenario. We did ask the general plan subcommittee to um just give us their feedback. They were not required to come to consensus, but they did actually end up agreeing on many topics. They held two public meetings on February seventeenth and March third to give us their feedback. And for the circulation scenario, four members preferred circulation alternative C. Two GPS members supported circulation alternative A because they feel that the city really should focus on pedestrian and bicycle improvements. Uh, but they also liked the super block concept from alternative C and suggested including that in alternative A. We did have one GPS member who um favored circulation alternative B in order to provide transit improvements that would support the local workforce, but also um liked the super block concept from circulation alternative C. The um, when they turned to the general plan uh land use scenario, this table kind of presents a summary of their of their um ideas. So the way to read this table is that for study area one north, we had six GPS members who were in support of alternative B and one who recommended a combination of um both B and A. So you can see that um there were a a diversity of viewpoints on the general plan subcommittee. And again, if you would like to return to this table for your discussion, we're happy to go over it in um more detail. In general, the GPS suggested um the need for the objective design standards I talked about earlier to create beautiful spaces, not only thinking about the land use, but also how these places will look and feel. Consistent suggestions to allow for a mix of uses to maximize flexibility and to consider potential air quality impacts to residential uses along highways and high volume roadways. And then uh we have also, of course, shared the planned use and circulation alternatives with the planning commission. In this case, we did ask for a recommendation on the preferred scenario. So let me walk through that. The planning commission recommended circulation alternative C with the comments that this alternative should prioritize pedestrian improvements, especially pedestrian and bicycle crossings over US one oh one uh and State Route ninety two. And the planning commission also expressed interest in creating a specific plan for the north central neighborhood specifically to respond in greater depths to the requirements of of SB one thousand to address environmental justice. We also have a table that summarizes the planning commission's recommendation on the preferred land use scenario. The planning commission approached this by making a recommendation for each study area. And so as you can see here, the way their recommendations unfolded was to make a recommendation identifying one alternative as the preferred alternative, but then also to provide a direction for how that alternative should change in order to create the planning commission's preferred land use scenario. Uh, and all of these are uh majority votes of the planning commission. So again, I'm not going to go through this table line by line at this point in the presentation, but we do have this information that we can remind you of or revisit as part of your discussion later tonight. You can uh just quickly get a sense of the um where the Xs are here. In every case except study area seven, the planning commission recommendation supports either alternative B or alternative C. Following the planning commission meeting, um, we took their uh recommendations, study area by study area and compiled those into a map. Um, and then also took a look at what implications that might have for how that would change the residential and and employment build out that I showed you earlier. So this is the same table that we looked at at the beginning of the presentation. And the column for the planning commission preferred scenario is added here on the far right. Uh, you can see that the planning commission preferred scenario would regret would result in slightly greater amount of residential development than any of the three alternatives. Um, and that's because, as I mentioned earlier, uh, alternative B kind of spreads density around and alternative C concentrates it in a fewer number of study areas. And so there are cases where in some study areas or on some parcels, alternative B does offer a higher density option than alternative C, even though overall alternative C is the highest um residential capacity. So when you choose the the some of the highest um higher density uh choices from alternative B and mix and match those with the high density options that are already in alternative C, uh, the planning commission designed a preferred scenario that uh represents a slight increase above the residential capacity of alternative C. And uh just another point to make as we look at all these numbers together. We are considering the general plan land use map kind of as a whole. And to design these alternatives, we we thought about maybe shifting density from one place to another or preserving lower densities uh on one parcel and higher densities on another parcel. So um there is, that doesn't mean that every parcel is going to be zoned for the maximum amount of density. But overall, the cumulative effect as shown here is a significant increase in in residential development capacity in San Mateo uh under um that the alternatives. And again, this is just a map of the um planning commission's uh preferred land use scenario. We do have this broken down by study area, so you can look at it in more detail as we go through your discussion. And I will uh turn it over to Zach to close us out with next steps.
Thank you, Joanna. So looking forward at our next steps, as I noted earlier, we will be bringing um back our land use preferred scenario in July for council confirmation. And then we are um following this meeting, going to be transitioning into our goals, policies and action, as well as environmental justice phase of the general plan. We'll be looking at this for all of our general plan elements. And that will start with the publication of our draft goals, policies and actions and environmental justice component in the summer, and then we will be holding meetings before the planning commission and council into the fall to um develop those that go into each of our general plan elements. And then, um, as I noted before, also, um, you will have a number of additional opportunities moving forward as a council to weigh in on various aspects of the general plan and then ultimately these two meetings to consider the final product before uh adoption, which is targeted for the end of twenty twenty three. The other piece, wanted to provide a little bit more now that we've gone over our presentation, is our recommended approach for getting through your discussion this evening. So for the preferred circulation scenario, we we do have slides of each alternative as well as the planning commission's recommendation to support your discussion and ultimately your vote on the preferred circulation scenario. For the preferred land use scenario, um, we are recommending that you go study area by study area. This was the approach taken by both the general plan subcommittee and the planning commission, and I think offers the best balance of ensuring that we can have a a discussion that's manageable while making sure everyone's input is is addressed and incorporated. So we will also have um each of our study area or alternatives for each study area available, as well as the planning commission's recommendation. Did want to note, just as you're moving through the discussion, study areas one, two, three and four generally have the longer discussions and then six, nine and ten were able to move through the quickest. So just a a reference point as you're moving through your discussions this evening. And then also staff will be taking notes and we're we're more than happy to provide support as needed to work through the discussion here. So we are looking at a thirteen total motions um this evening, one for circulation and then twelve for the land use scenario to get through this discussion and and make sure we've adequately heard all of your input and direction on on where these two pieces of the general plan are going. So with that, that concludes our presentation, um, and we are available for any clarifying questions that you may have.
Mr. Mayor, I think you made it.
Councilmember Rodriguez, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I want to ask um one question that I I asked during the the general plan subcommittee uh meeting, and I just think it's important because I keep getting this asked to me. And that is um if if we end, if this council ultimately approves a general plan that 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 runs afoul of of measure Y, um, some some of major or some of the preferred scenario B and a lot of C. And the voters do not approve it. What happens?
So once we have a preferred land use scenario recommendation from the city council, we staff will review it for how it aligns or does not align with measure Y and then come back to the council with alternatives for how to proceed. And that is before the adoption of of the general plan. But yes, any any portion of the the general plan land use map that is inconsistent with measure Y would require a vote at ballot measure and approval by the voters. And once we know the pathway, we can provide council with more alternatives, including potentially potential options if a old ballot measure ultimately is not successful.
Okay. Um, and then the other question um that that I've been getting a lot is on on a lot of the on the like the high residential zoning. It's it's kind of not, it's not really capped on how high that would be. If if we if we uh approve that, when is, when are the details kind of determined exactly what what those mean?
So when you're talking about heights versus densities, we we have three ranges for um low, medium and high, and those identify potential height ranges and density ranges. One of the important things to note, though, is the density, and and I think um the city's project that we recently broken for ground on Keeper Crossing is a good example. Even if you're up to two hundred units an acre, you don't necessarily need twelve stories. So there's also the ability for council to provide direction on on how we might cap these land uses if if you so desire. So that's something that you could weigh in on this evening if you want to identify certain caps. And and we would bring that back as part of our July meeting to provide confirmation as we move into our goals, policies and actions and our land use element, which would also further clarify and provide some parameters to that.
Great, thank you. That's all the questions I have for now.
Thank you very much. Are the council members? Don't think I see anybody waving at me.
Mr. Mayor, I would just uh, I guess, offer a slightly different take on um our discussion. The measure Y proponents really pointed out that what they were looking for was a safeguard while we had this conversation. They were not trying to impose these caps into eternity. And so really, the measure Y proponents were just saying whatever the general plan process produces would go back to the voters and get approved at that point. So the the phrasing of running afoul of measure Y doesn't make sense based on
So the phrasing of running afoul of Measure Y doesn't make sense based on really what the Measure Y proponents brought to us originally, was that it was a safeguard while we had this conversation. And so I would assume that they were being sincere when they made those arguments.
Good. Thank you very much, Councilmember Gothles. Councilwoman Lee, please go ahead.
I just wanted to fact check, because my understanding was that the highest heights and densities scenarios were capped at 12 floors and that that was standardized in the General Plan outreach, education, and process. So while the reference says eight-plus stories and doesn't have an upper cap, that was my understanding, based on the community survey, which I thought was aligned with the General Plan reference material, which had it specified. Am I misremembering or?
The place types menu that we've been providing as part of the outreach engagement and has been running along with our land use alternatives discussion identifies the range of heights in stories as well as densities. What I was noting was that you could get up, for the high density, it does talk about heights up to 12 stories. Generally, that's been eight to 12, and then density is up to 200 units an acre. But one of the highlights was you don't necessarily need 12 stories to get to 200 units an acre. You could actually achieve that in a lower height. So if the council wants to provide input on a height cap, that can definitely be folded into the land use element moving forward. So those are ranges, but if the council wants to prescribe more specific heights or densities to each one, that can absolutely be folded.
Okay, but the standardization and definition of high density was a range of eight to 12 stories?
Or up to 12. You could be lower, obviously, depending on the density.
Yeah, so I think that the key is just kind of, it leaves it ambiguous because it says eight plus, which can be misconstrued, which is what has happened just now. Okay, so I had some questions just that surfaced during some of the community input process, and I was wondering if staff has looked at or identified where there may be proposals for downzoning?
In the different study areas with the alternatives A through C?
Yes.
We haven't gone parcel by parcel. In general, the development of the land uses was kind of assigned to hit those overall growth targets. As part of, once we have direction from the council, we can go through, and if there's specific council direction to ensure that your preferred scenario ensures there's no downzoning, we can confirm that. In general, that's the case, but there may be certain instances where a certain alternative does have a land use that has a range that could be below its current. But it wouldn't be hard to ensure that there isn't any downzoning as part of the final preferred land use scenario once we receive direction from council.
Okay, that's it. Yes, Prasanna?
Just a quick comment about downzoning. So under state law, there's some limits on our ability to lessen the intensity of housing. I mean, sort of the basic idea is that there's no net loss in housing in our capacity to facilitate the construction of housing. So just kind of something to keep in mind is that the term downzoning suggests a concept that there are restrictions in state law on our ability to do that on a parcel-by-parcel basis. Just something to keep in mind.
Thank you. And that was going to be my next question, sort of clarification about what the legal restrictions might be. And yeah, so I guess my, I think my other my other question is about how I think there's been some, I think, some discussion, community discussion about the job housing imbalance calculations. And I wanted to elevate this question because I think that it's a little bit confusing to present the information the way it has been using the definition in the presentation. And so, Joanne, I wanted to invite you to respond to some of the community questions that have come up about how, you know, the basis for the way that we are calculating the job housing imbalance by restricting it to employed residents and how that squares with the incredible growth in job creation over, you know, the last several decades and how that has certainly not kept pace with our housing our housing numbers, so our housing production numbers. So I'm just, to me, that's a very big question in terms of how we frame the need. The need is also very clearly reiterated by our community survey results where, you know, the vast majority of residents are saying that, you know, San Mateo is unaffordable. We know that the affordability is driven by, you know, a job housing imbalance, and yet the data that we're presenting, it seems to paint a picture that we're close to the mark. So I'm having trouble reconciling the way that we're presenting our data with the clear housing crisis that we're in. And so I'm just, I want to invite some more discussion about that, just because I think it's really important. It's really important, the way that we talk about the housing crisis, the way that we present our data, and that it passes, you know, professional standards and that it will be defensible when it comes to our housing element and certification process.
So I'll jump in real briefly, council member, and then I'm happy to hand it over to Joanna or Christina Horstberger if you want to add to that. I think you touched on a lot of very important issues that are much larger than just a jobs housing number. And I think in many respects, what you're referring to is a larger regional issue when it comes to the overall jobs that are available and the overall housing that's available and the housing that's available to the residents who need it. So there's all of that information goes well beyond just a single ratio. And as we presented earlier, the jobs to employed residents number is actually fairly well-aligned, but that is just within the city of San Mateo's borders. And that's why when we look at a regional housing needs allocation, that is looking at the Bay Area as a whole. And so often, we will look at larger work by an entity like AVAG, the Association of Bay Area Governments, when they look at the Bay Area as a region or the peninsula, and then their regional housing needs allocation to sometimes guide that larger discussion. As there's a lot of things that go on beyond our control that happen within our boundaries, and I think that's illustrated by personal choices, where even if we had the housing for everyone, people might choose to live elsewhere and still work in an adjacent community because we are part of that larger urban context. So that's one thought to consider, where our jobs to employed residents is one metric that can be used to understand how we're doing. And at its core, we have an affordability crisis here where we don't have the housing at all income levels that we need to support all of the people that work in the city of San Mateo. And so there's more nuance to it than even just a jobs housing bounds. Because even if you add sufficient housing, if you don't have it at the right income categories, you're still not going to successfully provide housing for all of the residents who need it.
Okay, I just want to push a little bit because, you know, again, I don't, I think it's important to keep a regional context in mind, but I also, you know, we can speak about, and we should be speaking very plainly about what is happening within the boundaries of the city of San Mateo. And so my understanding is that, you know, between 2010 and 2019, we created 2,735 homes, and in that same period, we created 16,000 jobs. And so, you know, those kinds of those kinds of hard and fast numbers, to me, demonstrate that we have actually been part of in a contributing, you know, contributing to the problem of the job housing imbalance. And so it's just, I take issue with the way that we're presenting our data. And, you know, so maybe that's not a question, maybe it's just a statement, but it's really hard for me. I think I'm challenged in terms of the way that we're framing this conversation. Because I think that the appropriate framing is that we haven't done enough and that we need to do more.
And then, Joanne, if you have anything further to add on what I, in response, feel free to jump in.
Sure, thank you, Zach. And thank you, Councilmember Lee, for the question. I certainly, like you, have been part of many community discussions throughout this process where the need for additional housing and additional housing that is affordable to all members of the San Mateo community was the number one thing that we have heard about over and over again. So I certainly would never dispute that that is a primary goal of both the housing element that is currently on the streets in San Mateo and also of this general plan update. I absolutely have heard that message as an important priority, and it was reiterated, as you noted, in the community survey that we just, the city just did in early 2022. The numbers that are presented in the Alternatives Evaluation Report are the numbers that are available through the U.S. Census, and that data source, just like any data source, certainly has criticisms that can be leveled at it. For myself personally, as a planner, jobs to employed residents is a typical metric that we look at. It's certainly not the only way to look at this issue. But the reason that I like to take a look at it as part of a process like a general plan update is because it compares people to people. And when we talk about jobs to housing, you're comparing a person in a job role to a housing unit, and a housing unit can be a lot of different things, and it can have one person in it, or it can have eight people in it. And so it's difficult, it can get a little bit foggy to make a one-to-one comparison when we talk about a job compared to a housing unit. So that's my reasoning for presenting the information about comparing jobs to employed residents in San Mateo and using U.S. Census data to do that. But I'm certainly aware that there's other data sources out there and other information, and I appreciate you raising it tonight and keeping it as part of our conversation.
Those are my questions for now. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor Papen, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any questions. I'm ready to move on to the matters at hand that we need to decide and get, because I think we're going to have a long evening. I think we can all stipulate that there's housing that's needed in the area and our residents are looking for more housing. I'd just like to see if we can start on some of the tasks at hand here, if that's okay.
Thank you very much. If there are no other questions, we will do exactly that, because I'm ready for that too. Seeing none, then we'll ask staff to please proceed with the nuts and bolts. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, at this point, we would recommend going to public comment.
Oh, of course. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do we have public commenters?
If I could just ask a question?
Yes.
How are we going to do this? Then you're expecting public comment on each and every item that we're going to take up in the future as this meeting goes forward? Or what is your anticipation here?
We would recommend
Thank you, Mr. Dol. Go ahead.
Pardon me. We would recommend taking public comment on both the circulation and land use scenarios right now, and then for your discussion, breaking it up by circulation and then study area.
Thank you very much. And then, Madam Clerk, we'll be seeking public input on both the circulation and land use elements. So here we have speakers, I think I see nine of them.
If everyone who would like to speak on this topic, if you could raise your hand now so we could get an accurate count of how many people are interested in speaking? Mr. Mayor, the numbers are still going up.
Okay, we've seen it plateaued at 19, 20. Okay. Considering that we'll probably have more speakers than that in the end, I'm going to ask if we can have two minutes per speaker. Madam Clerk.
Duly noted, two minutes per speaker. Our first speaker is Ryan Monteschemi. Ryan, please go ahead.
All right. Good evening, City Council, Honorable Mayor. Thank you for your diligent study of this issue. I was here earlier when the La Sam business owner was talking about hoping that their study area or their property could be potentially upzoned to allow for them to develop affordable housing. I just want to point out that that is in Study Area Three, and I looked up their address. And at the moment, it seems to me that that slipper south of 25th Avenue on Palm Place is not proposed to be medium-high residential. At least in Alternative C, that's what I mainly looked at. So I would suggest the property owner, it sounds like they probably would like to have a medium-high residential designation based on their comments or an affordable housing overlay. So that's just a point along Study Area Three, given their intention and hope to develop affordable housing on that site. I also had some other points. So I believe that circulation, Alternative C, is the superior circulation alternative as it recognizes that certain improvements may be more important on certain rights-of-way in the city. So there might be places where transit improvements are especially necessary versus pedestrian and bicycle improvements, et cetera. And it helps us have a conversation about how we can grow the pie of funding that's available to implement more of these priorities, so that we have fewer trade-offs to make, at least from a financial perspective, if not from a physical right-of-way perspective. So I'm glad that the council will be taking up that kind of a discussion in the next fiscal year, according to the strategic plan that you did adopt. I think that Alternative C concentrating development in your transit is generally what we need and what a supermajority of San Mateans, based on the community statistical, community survey supports. And I also support a neighborhood-specific plan in North Central to identify transportation improvements. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Winehouse.
Good evening, members of the council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. I almost don't know where to start with this, frankly. It does feel a little like I'm shouting into the void. I'm speaking on behalf of Schmerg here initially, the proponents of Measure Y. And the first thing I think I really need to do is unconfuse Councilmember Gothles. Schmerg has always acted in good faith, unlike the council, I might say, in terms of everything from getting the Measure Y on the ballot to getting it passed. So to suggest that we would be acting otherwise is simply offensive and inaccurate. And inaccurate, because what he's saying is that we had it as a placeholder for a general plan process. Well, let me be clear. We put it in place to protect the residents of San Mateo against a sham general plan process and its outcome. We were promised a robust general plan process, and if that outcome represents the will of the majority of San Mateans, and it will hold up at the ballot, then we would support it. Now, the way things seem to be going, and I fully, I do not expect you to change direction on this, I think you'll charge ahead with the scenarios that you're looking at here, including the Planning Commission showing they're completely out of touch with reality and what people in San Mateo want by going above and beyond C is just insanity for all the various reasons. So I hope I've made that very clear, that if this is not the various reasons. So I hope I've made that very clear, that if this is not a an acceptable general plan, if I had used one word to describe the process, I would say specious from the top down from the Rena numbers to the calling that that survey statistically valid, when you know it isn't, and the survey administrators even said it isn't. So cherry picking that data is not is is just crazy to me. So that said, I back up everything that Mr. Nash submitted on behalf of Baywood. And I would ask that you definitely don't specifically up the density in downtown along Third and Fourth to medium high. It's fine, just where it is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Maxine Turner.
You hear me?
Yes.
Terrific. I'm sorry that I first have to say that I just don't understand why the public short review time to give you this direct feedback was scheduled over the Passover, Easter, and Ramadan holiday weekend. It certainly interfered with the time people had to give you feedback. I do not support land use and circulation option C for maximum development, which is not needed to meet any state requirements, nor is it sustainable, given the water, traffic, parking, parks, and services required. Consider a two-phase general plan with an if then range for land uses that recognize the voter approved Measure Y, which expires in 2030, and that Rena housing mandates can be met through 2030 under alternative A, which also provides the most revenue to the city. San Mateo residents have chosen a small scale city to massive congested urban heights and densities. There are too many areas designated for eight plus stories. The general plan needs to specifically identify the eight plus maximum height limits, and that should also include mandated bonuses. There's too much hypocrisy and conflict between what the words in the report say and what is being proposed. General Plan says we need affordable housing, enhanced pedestrian experience, support of small businesses. Yet in the downtown study area, eight plus story height limits surround the beloved historic district and Central Park. These tall buildings are not pedestrian friendly with winds and shadows. How can there be no residential zoning in the downtown with all the talk about transit oriented? There's only mixed use. There to get housing downtown, there needs to be a requirement for a certain percentage of residential in mixed use zones, or we will not get affordable housing or a vibrant pedestrian oriented downtown. And please protect some of our small businesses because commercial rents get raised significantly in new buildings and become unaffordable for most small businesses. This is along El Camino Real surrounding downtown and along the railroad tracks. We need to leave some small heights and densities to protect these businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Maxine. Our next speaker is Charity Wagner.
Anything? Can you hear me, Mayor Benia?
Yes.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be speaking with you tonight. I really appreciate your time in advance. My name is Charity Wagner, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the landowners of property located at fifteen oh one to fifteen fifty five West Hillsdale Boulevard. As stated in our letter dated February twenty eighth and noted in the table included as attachment seven of your staff report tonight, we are requesting that the council direct staff to modify the land use designation from the existing low density multifamily to a medium density multifamily land use designation as part of your preferred land use scenario that forms this general plan update. We see several benefits to updating this land use designation, including the fact that the property is currently developed with the Parkview Terrace Apartments, a land use that is more consistent with the proposed medium density family designation. A significant portion of this four and a half acre property is actually underutilized, including a dilapidated and unused tennis court and undeveloped lands that could be repurposed for much needed workforce housing. It would be the intent of the landowner to allow for new development upon these vacant portions with no changes or impacts to the existing apartment building and tenants. The parcels also adjacent to two major corridors, Hillsdale Boulevard and Highway ninety two. The entire largely is surrounded by multifamily units such that increasing allowable density would be consistent with the land use pattern. And the property is adjacent to College of San Mateo, so we could be adding additional units potentially to house faculty and student housing. The parcel is adjacent to study area six, so we're asking that you flag this parcel for inclusion in the preferred land use scenario, either as an expansion to study area six or flag the parcel for a site specific inclusion in a preferred land use scenario. In closing, we admire all of your work by city staff and the placeworks team, and we hope that you agree with our assessment that a designation of medium density multifamily is most appropriate for this parcel. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lisa Diaz Nash.
Good evening, City Council and city staff. My name is Lisa Diaz Nash. I'm on the library board, but I'm speaking as a private individual. Thank you all for all the work that has gone over the past year to do this. I recommend council endorses land use alternative A as the foundation for the 2040 general plan, and then adds more targeted, affordable, transit oriented housing as necessary. There are elements of land use alternative B that would fit into this scenario and could be woven into alternative A, as both the GPS and the planning commission have pointed out. This also would better reflect public input during the process. We must preserve existing affordable housing throughout San Mateo and transform unneeded commercial buildings, strip malls, and shopping centers into multi use complexes with balanced residential commercial use and increased parks and open space. I oppose land use alternative C as setting out too large a growth in new housing units without using a realistic cost basis or planning for sufficient infrastructure. The general plan consultant has judged alternative C too costly using today's cost scenarios and technology capabilities. Alternative C requires a level of water resources that is unrealistic. City staff has demonstrated that in draft housing element, the seven thousand fifteen housing units requiring this Rena cycle of San Mateo can be met under current zoning regulations. And alternative C doesn't require any higher percentage of new construction to be affordable housing, which is what we really need. I do support, however, transportation alternative C, as we will need substantial investment in pedestrian and cyclist safety, in addition to greatly increased quality, convenient public transit to reduce public vehicle use. I also support the super block concept. We must, however, prioritize aggressive parking mitigation measures and creative measures like public private parking solutions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ally Saperman.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Ally Saperman, and I'm here on behalf of the Housing Action Coalition, a member supported nonprofit that advocates for creating more housing for residents of all income levels to alleviate the Bay Area and California's housing shortage, displacement, and affordability crisis. I'm here to speak in strong support of mixed use high density development for the city's general plan. In terms of the Bay Shore Commons, there are a few key elements of the site that is very advantageous for development that I'd like to emphasize on. One, jobs to housing balance. Rezoning a property currently and entirely dedicated to office space to include housing will help the lopsided ratio of jobs to homes added over the last decade. A stated goal of the housing element and general plan process. Two, transit orientation. The development is half a mile from the Hayward Park Caltrain Station. And the area will also see significantly expanded bicycle access once improvements are made via implementation of the bicycle master plan and community benefits package from the nearby passage project. Three, location to existing amenities. There are multiple schools, parks and playgrounds, grocery stores, restaurants currently in the area, and more slated to come with future passage development. Job to housing balance, development close to transit and existing amenities are all things the Housing Action Coalition considers when supporting a project, and we are very excited that the city is interested in exploring mixed use high development. Thank you to the city staff for your work on the general plan process. Mayor, council members, please vote in support of mixed use high development. Thanks so much. Have a great night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bradley Karavasik.
Good evening, Mayor Benia and members of the city council. My name is Bradley Karavasik, and I am VP of Development at PS Business Parks. We are the long term owner of Bay Shore Corporate Commons, which is located at seventeen twenty South Ample, right next to the San Mateo Marriott. Our site is about fourteen and a half acres and was developed decades ago as an office park with eight low rise buildings totaling roughly three hundred and forty thousand square feet. We submitted a letter for your consideration tonight that sets forth our preference for the site's ultimate land use designation that will be established in the preferred land use scenario. Currently, the three land use scenarios show the site as residential alternatives A and C as residential low and alternative B as residential medium. Given the site's longevity as an office park and its immediate adjacency to commercial, office, and residential, we strongly believe that mixed use designation would be a better fit for the proposed residential designation. The planning commission recommended mixed use high for the site, and we agree. Mixed use density and the existing commercial zone adjacent to one oh one and close to the Hayward Park Station makes good sense. Thus, the mixed use high designation for the Bay Shore Corporate Commons will create a mixed use node that better aligns with the surrounding context. This mixed use designation will create uses and densities that provide the flexibility required for a viable development opportunity that can deliver both commercial and residential, along with open space and neighborhood serving uses and furtherance of the city's general plan goals and vision. Thank you for your time tonight and for the important work that you are doing for the future of San Mateo. We respectfully request that you consider the planning commission's mixed use high recommendation as you decide on the preferred land use scenario. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Gustavo Hornos.
Good evening to all members of the City Council of San Mateo. My name is Gustavo Hornos, and with my wife Jessica, we are here to respectfully express our opposition and grave concern about what we consider an arbitrary proposal to lower the density of our home block. This could greatly affect our rights as homeowners and could face legal scrutiny. It is also ground contrary to our city's stated goals of improving the zoning to meet the regional housing needs allocation numbers. Our property is located at six oh six South Delaware Street between Fifth and Seventh Avenue and is currently zoned R four high density multifamily housing. But surprisingly, in the general plan, use alternatives for zone four, all of the alternatives inexplicably propose down zoning. The alternative A is proposing to change it to a medium density, and alternatives B and C want to lower it into a low density. Let me tell you that this block is located clearly in the downtown district and inside the half mile mass transit radius, right where many new tall buildings constructions are already happening and will continue happening with all kind of incentives and waivers, like the five floors at four oh five East Fourth Avenue where the Barcada Company has its headquarters, and the recently approved seven floors Kiko Cross in Mid Penn Housing and five floor garage just one block from us. Moreover, and as another sign that we are in the business district, our neighbor right behind our backyard is the San Mateo Lambert, which is sitting in a big lot that could easily be converted in the future into another tall building. We know that these new buildings would greatly affect our privacy in our backyard, the amount of open view, and even the hours of sunlight that we are used to enjoying every day. But we know that new construction is needed and will help so many people willing to live in this beautiful city. We get that, and we want to support that. We only ask the council that it will be nice to be treated with equity and keep our current zoning as it is.
Thank you, Mr. Hornos. Your time is up. So thank you very much for speaking.
Our next speaker is Dusan Malitak.
Hello. Good evening, members of the council and staff. My name is Dushan Milicich. I represent the owners of four seven seven and three four one Hillsdale Boulevard in a study area nine. I am speaking as a follow up to a letter that we sent to the staff on March thirtieth, requesting that our site be included in all elements of the of the proposed plans under the medium residential designation and not under the low residential designation as it currently shows. And I further noticed that in the slides with the the matrix of, you know, different recommendations that there was no recommended change in in zone nine where we are. And so I would humbly ask that staff and council reconsider. There's a long history of this site being submitted under the flexible zoning code under R four for fifty DU per acre. And this would take it down to a maximum thirty nine, and it would just be inconsistent and really function as an effective down zoning of the site. So we humbly ask that you allow us to be part of the solution for providing the seven thousand and fifteen new units that the city needs to satisfy Rena numbers and that you include our site under the medium residential designation so that we can help increase housing in the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lori Watanuki.
Good evening, Mayor Benia, members of the city council. My name is Lori Watanuki. Alternative A is the closest to Measure P, which seven thousand voters voted for, and is more realistic than B and C. And the housing element stated that the likely build out will be five thousand eight hundred and twenty eight units by twenty thirty one, far less than alternative even alternative A allows, which is twelve thousand units. We support alternative A for study area four, which includes the downtown portions of the central and north central neighborhoods on the east side of San Mateo. The simplistic measure being near transit, leading to not using a car, is unrealistic. People use cars when they need a car to do the job. Is all future development going to restrict the car ownership in TODs? We need to see if transit behaviors change before making these assumptions, which impact the quality of life and more greenhouse gases. I do support Michael Nash's letter, and we support alternative A in the circulation element for pedestrian improvements to challenging intersections, implementing traffic calming near highway onramps, and a pedestrian downtown. We do not support parking removal or curb cuts on residential streets to add more vehicular traffic lanes near Highway onramps one oh one and ninety two. We have reached our level of capacity at Third, Fourth, and Fifth avenues at Humboldt with just one exit. We need to update the September nineteen eighty nine historic building survey in our residential neighborhood to preserve the various historical homes and older buildings that contribute to the historic resources in San Mateo. There are many homes on the east and west side which individually and collectively contribute to the historic character of our neighborhoods. And we need mitigation to protect our historic resources in in the EIR. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Martin Wiggins.
Good evening, Mayor Benia and council members. My name is Martin Wiggins, and I live in Hayward Park. I want to thank you so much for your efforts as well as staff's over this multi year planning process. I found it quite easy to participate in surveys, in open houses, and in reviewing the published alternatives. From that, I have submitted written comments, and I've also listened to one of the general plan subcommittee meetings and the planning commission meeting. I think this process has been thorough and done in good faith, and I think it's safe to say that anyone with an opinion has had a reasonable chance to share it. Having listened to all of this and seen the hard work that's been invested, I support the planning commission's recommendations for circulation option C and their sort of consensus recommendation on land use, which, as you know, is a blend of three. There's a lot to come to be said about this process, and I know you have a long night ahead, so I'll leave my comments at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chris Conway.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. My name is Chris Conway. I'm a committed NIMBY. My backyard is for my backyard. My question has to do with the outreach to the general public. It seemed like there was a survey sent out that people could fill out and bring back in. And then there was another consumer survey that was done later. In the first survey that was brought in with people, there was a designation that fifty percent of those people who responded were both white, fifty, and homeowners. I don't know what significance that has. And the community survey, they don't give the demographics of those who participated in that. And as you And as you can see, both the surveys do not say the same thing. I would like the council to remember that the people of San Mateo have worked very hard to pass Measure Y against the council's wishes, which you have made clear. And I would like to advise the council on circulation A and land use A to stop the development that has already been happening throughout the decades. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Bohannon.
Good evening, Mayor Benia and members of the City Council. My name is David Bohannon, President and CEO of the David D. Bohannon Organization. Given the current downward shift in the retail market, we've been evaluating the potential future for Hillsdale and the unique opportunities its evolution presents to San Mateo. We submitted a letter for your consideration that shows our preferred land use map for Hillsdale, and I wanted to take this opportunity tonight to elaborate on our reasoning. While we prepare to start a robust community engagement effort to help us plan for the future, we have already heard that a mix of uses at Hillsdale, residential, retail, and commercial, makes the most land use sense and allows us to explore ways to create a special place, one which will succeed in the marketplace, exceed the community's expectations, and protect the city's fiscal health. As we approach our engagement effort to plan for the reimagining of the mall site, we know and have heard that it will be important to respect the edges adjacent to our neighbors. In earlier letters to the city, we have signaled our intent to do just this and are confident that this can be achieved through specific planning for the site. We strongly believe that maximum flexibility is needed to create a viable future for Hillsdale that preserves its role as a special place for San Mateo. Our preferred designations of mixed-use medium and high can create an exciting ecosystem that minimizes impacts while, very importantly, facilitating the opportunities to significantly contribute to the city's housing needs. To increase this flexibility, we also ask that you consider adjusting the boundary of the study area to include the parcel that contains a portion of the Hillsdale Garden Apartments. The inclusion of this parcel provides the opportunity for the holistic planning of Hillsdale with more housing and good design. Thank you all for your hard work on this important general plan process. We look forward to working with the city as the process moves forward and urge you to consider our land use designation as you decide on the preferred land use scenarios. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ken Chan.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Wonderful. Well, hello, members of the San Mateo City Council. My name is Ken Chan, and I'm an organizer with the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. We work with committees and their leaders to produce and preserve quality affordable homes, which is the exact reason why I'm here tonight. I'd first like to thank staff and the consultants for their presentation and all of their hard work in putting together the packet in regards to our city's general plan update. On behalf of the at the previous Planning Commission meeting last month, I'd like to ask that you remove land use plan alternative A from your consideration. It does not fully address the jobs-housing imbalance that we are all collectively experiencing here in San Mateo and only serves to add to it because the number of proposed homes improperly plans for our city's futures housing needs. While still on this topic, we'd also like for the commission to consider a couple of recommendations in regards to Bay Shore Commons. Since it's listed on the site's inventory of the draft housing element, rebranding the site from strictly commercial to mixed-use would accomplish two key things. One, meet HCD substantial evidence requirement for all of San Mateo's housing element sites, and two, help the city to address the ratio in favor of homes over jobs. In addition, it's also close to a lot of amenities and the Hayward Park Station, which would give our community the option to utilize public transit and in turn lower the amount of vehicle miles traveled. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Erica Pell.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me the time to provide my comments to staff. As a public servant for many, many years, I want to say thank you so much for all your hard work. It's very professional. It's very well done. I'm truly impressed at how you pulled it all together. I did have a comment about, under description of alternatives, page six, it says, "Alternative A generally has the least change in designations and the lowest residential growth." So using the term least and lowest immediately gives someone the impression that it really isn't doing anything. And I think it's a little bit misleading because alternative A actually has, you know, homes of 11,810. So that's about 4,000 more than the most recent projections that are demand from ABAG. So that's also 60% more than the requirements from ABAG. So I think that those two terms, saying the least and the lowest, is not... It's almost like putting in your opinion someone thinks that it's not enough. So that's one thing. The second thing is I did go to, and these are all more like minor comments. I did go to San Mateo's, what's it, Strive, Strive San Mateo website, and the link to the agenda for today's meeting is broken. So anyone that went to the website, which is a very nice website, by the way, couldn't access this information to attend today's meeting. So that's a little bit... That's a tough one right there. I don't know what to say about it. And I think the last one is just, I actually do believe that alternative A is very, very good. It's a good alternative. It's achievable. It provides housing for a variety of, you know, the community. It has, I think, 2200. I don't know the exact number for Measure H. I'm not educated enough on that, but I think it does provide a few thousand homes for affordable housing. So it does do that. And then the last thing is, apparently...
Thank you, Erica. Your time is up.
Oh, I just want to say something about the county projection. That's 47,000, and we're saying 11,000. So we're literally taking up a quarter of the housing for the entire county in our small city of San Mateo.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Dunham.
Good evening, Mayor Benia, council members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Mike Dunham. I'm a lead with Peninsula for Everyone, which advocates for more affordable and sustainable housing, as well as sustainable and equitable communities. I've attended a number of these meetings, and I find it very interesting when you look at the two different surveys that have been administered by the city. When you actually account for demographics and try to get a truly representative sample of the population, the number of people who prioritize protecting R1 neighborhoods and limiting heights plummets. And I think that should show you everything about how we run these public processes that, you know, the people who have time to listen to a two-hour meeting and know exactly when to unmute their Zoom, that's not most people. Most people are with their families. They're working at their job. They're trying to relax after a long day of work. And I think the comment you tend to hear, especially from folks who oppose change, is just not representative of the community. And I applaud the staff consultants for doing an actually statistically representative survey because you get what the community actually thinks, which is that affordable housing is an enormous issue. The lack of housing in San Mateo and elsewhere is an enormous issue, and you should be, as policymakers, pulling every lever you can to solve that problem. I think it's been pretty clear from the other bodies that have looked at this issue that alternative A just doesn't hold water. You know, and really, it's a question of the mix between B and C. I think you have some thoughtful recommendations from the Planning Commission and the General Plan Subcommittee. I urge you to take those really seriously, and I appreciate all the hard work you're putting into it. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sean.
Here is Sean.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Mayor, for again hearing me. Again, I would like to invite any of all of you to visit our store and have a discussion. Just please hold off until after May 8th, which is Mother's Day. So we'll have a little time. Sorry that this planning process occurred during the COVID because much of the input that I think is missing from those who are running businesses were too occupied with trying to keep their heads above water, that you might have lost some input from that field. But again, being in the community for the length of time, 80 years, we've seen what has developed around us, and we do have some observations and solutions that we think would be helpful for our community, not just building low-income housing, but also trying to help interface with other social aspects of just not providing housing because we've been in the community so long and we've watched it grow, and hopefully we've contribute to the community to help it become what it is. I know it's going to be a long evening, and I've not had a professional prepared speech. I just wanted to give some input for the council and you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jordan Grimes.
Good evening, Council Honorable Mayor. Jordan Grimes, lifelong resident and lead member with Peninsula for Everyone. I'd like to voice my strong support for alternative C. It lowers VMT overall, a critically important component for all of our futures, and will engender the creation of the most new housing. It is the only sustainable, equitable option. I also want to advocate as well for the elimination of alternative A. Per staff, alternative A would spur 15,000 new jobs, but just 12,000 new homes. Census data shows that San Mateo added 22,000-ish new jobs between 2010 and 2019, with HUD data showing just 2,000 new homes permitted. The idea that we would pursue a plan that envisions an even more egregious jobs-housing imbalance over the next two decades while at the same time increasing per capita VMT should be a complete non-starter. It is quite literally planning to fail. Regarding the individual study areas, I think the path laid out by the Planning Commission makes the most sense. I do think we should consider going beyond alternative C in the downtown core and pursue mixed-use high in the Bay Shore Commons area and other areas with aging office parks. One of the best land use changes we can make right now is incentivizing the conversion of those spaces to new housing, and the way to do that is via the mixed-use high designation. A final note, yes, Measure Y passed by just 43 votes in a city of 105,000 people. We are not a small city. We are the largest city in the county. Is that the voice of the people? Certainly not of those most impacted, the workers who cannot afford to live here, who are not allowed to say. The statistically valid True North survey found that 68% of people, a supermajority of San Mateans, would support up to eight stories of new housing, 63% up to 12. Let's put that to a vote. Let's go with alternative C. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ken Abreu.
Thank you, and thank you, City Council members. I'm a long-term resident. I'm also a member of the Sierra Club Sustainable Land Use Committee. We sent you guys a letter on this topic back in February, which I'd refer you to. I won't go over the details now, but I think that the Planning Commission's recommendations are actually quite consistent with what we were recommending in our letter. We do have a housing crisis. There's just no doubt about it. It's particularly acute regarding affordable housing, and so this general plan needs to address that. The other thing to keep in mind is the general plan goes out to 2040, and a lot of people are just talking about the RINA. Well, the current RINA number is only going to go to 2031. You've got another nine years after that. You have to factor into this general plan. So that's why we think building out, you know, to something along the lines of what the Planning Commission has laid out would be appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Rank.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Jennifer Rank. I am land use counsel for the Hillsdale Shopping Center Ownership. Staff likely will make this point when you get to the study area discussion, but we wanted to quickly clarify that the Study Area Number Three map of the Planning Commission recommendations incorrectly labels the PetSmart site of the shopping center as mixed-use low instead of the mixed-use medium designation that the Planning Commission supported. We want to be sure the council understands this technical clarification for its deliberations tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Evan Adams.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for taking the time to hear us talk tonight. I'm going to talk about breakfast burritos. The first meeting I went to this in San Mateo was at Central Park, and you all had breakfast burritos there. I was really happy to get that because I'm from Foster City, and we don't have any breakfast burritos in town. What option C, and more importantly, the compromise that the Planning Commission came up with, increases a vibrant downtown San Mateo where people like me would love to come and spend our money? I would hope that you would seriously consider that as you are the biggest city in our county, and so you want people coming to your downtown core and having a great center of action and activity. Further, I've heard other people tonight talk about even going to mixed-use high density in some areas. If something like ownership of housing is important for you, I'd encourage you to even consider that because that, once you get to those levels of density, maybe there's a chance that someone will be able to own a home in one of these new developments rather than them being forever renters. And finally, I really want to look at Bridgepoint area. As you know, I lived closest to that area, and I really felt like the Planning Commission did not give that sufficient time to discuss. My concern there is lack of transit. There is no transit there anymore. AC transit's cut off its surface. But as I learned in the San Mateo, as I learned in the transit meeting, if you build it, they will come. If you build it, they'll build transit there. That will not only service that area of San Mateo, but also my areas of Foster City, and we can all have a better area together. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is a telephone call-in user number two. Please announce yourself.
Yes, good evening. My name is Karen Harrell. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I have several comments this evening. First of all, I want to be very clear, as people have mentioned in the past, that as you're throwing around designations of things like mixed-use at various levels, just to remind you, as some members of the Planning Commission have tried to clarify as well, mixed-use doesn't necessarily mean residential, and residential doesn't necessarily mean affordable. So as people are touting various scenarios as going to solve our affordable housing crisis, that's not what you get when you slap a mixed-use designation, regardless of the density, on a particular piece of land. So that's something that has to be clarified very, very clearly before the council moves forward with things. Secondly, some of us who have become a little bit jaded, shall we say, about the whole process, having gone to workshops, filled out surveys, whatever, and then a survey comes back and says 50% of the people want alternative A that filled out the survey, but somehow that doesn't seem to make any difference in all of the summaries that go forward. I'm going to leap ahead a little bit, and some of us felt that, well, perhaps the answer would come in the evaluations of the EIR. And so Smerg sent in a very detailed letter about things we wanted covered in the EIR for this process. And one response we got, because vehicle miles traveled is very important, so we said, "You need to look at how people are backfilling on their vehicle miles traveled. Perhaps they are not actually owning the car and driving the car for various things, but there are other vehicles that are supporting their way of life, even if they're not behind the wheel, and those are still vehicle miles traveled." We wanted that evaluated. And the response said, "We will not necessarily address the supplemental comments about vehicle miles traveled, such as developing localized data and looking for facts about how people really live in direct policies about land use, circulation, transportation, and the provision of parking." Am I allowed to say heaven forbid we look at how people actually live? And Mr. Gofles, Smerg will support an open and fair general plan policy, but we do not deliver what the voters will decide. Voters get confused enough, they vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rich Hedges.
Thank you very much. It's nice to be here tonight and listening to all the opinions. I've moved here 52 years ago. I was lucky to find a cheap apartment because I only had 600. I was lucky to find a cheap apartment because I only had $600 and was able to enroll in a very inexpensive education at San Francisco State for my master's degree. I'd like to see some of that for the future young people that want to come here, because I've become a very strong taxpayer in this community after I've gotten my education, and other young people that come here will too, if we can make space available for them. Having said that, I'm very much in favor of Option C, both in the circulation and general plan housing element. I want to say that I would do a combination of B and C and not be upset by that. I want to talk for a minute about tall buildings. Tall buildings are not of themselves ugly. It depends on the way they're developed and the planning that goes into them. Come to where I live and see the 13- to 9-story buildings that were built prior to Measure H and the ones that were built after that are squatty and cover the whole land element that they're on. Measure H was a travesty to good development. So I would say that much of the problem around tall buildings happens to be nothing, and that in our, for instance, discussion earlier about our park, Downtown Park, General Park, there are many tall buildings that were built there with housing in them prior to Measure H. And I can't think of a better place for a tall building than around a beautiful park like that for places for children to play. So I think some of our parking problems would be solved, quite frankly, in saying this a little bit tongue-in-cheek, if people would just quit filling their garages with junk in single-family neighborhoods and park in their garages. Because most of the parking problems in single-family neighborhoods come from too many cars in one household and no parking spaces in the garages. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is George Derby.
Yes, good evening. I would like to add my voice to a phased approach for implementing the general plan guidelines. That can mean many things, but probably at its core, it means not approving a maximum density scenario from the get-go where key resources such as water are not assured. You know, jumping in with both feet would be kind of wishful thinking at best and maybe gross negligence at worst. The maximum density scenarios seem to take into consideration the needs and desires of all those people who would like to live here, which is fine, but it seems to kind of push aside the opinions of the residents who already do and who may be asked to vote to approve key elements of this plan. So increasing densities, maybe increasing densities as development proceeds would allow for the kinds of adjustments and realignments that may be necessary to move to the next density level while aligning for any adjustments that, for any judgments, say, that arise from the previous development phase results. I guess I also personally believe that a phased approach would leave, would lead to essentially a general plan that is pulling from each of alternatives A, B, and C, which seems to be an approach that kind of consistently and implicitly seems to arise in various comments, including today and the various, various members of the council. So I guess I'd like to thank you for your real and substantial efforts so far, but please approve an approach that can be flexible and responsive, not just today, but through the duration of the plan's existence. Failing to do so might invite kind of backlash that severely restricts future planning and compromises growth scenarios in the future. So, thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Lori Hyder.
Hi, thank you very much for this meeting tonight. It's always very helpful to hear the presentation from the consultants and the concerns of the council. I know this is a very difficult process, and you seem to have a pretty divided community. The alternatives allow for 28% to 53.8% growth. As was mentioned earlier, alternative A provides enough growth to meet the housing requirements and then some. We have only grown 33% in San Mateo since 1980, and so to have 53.4% growth seems just untenable. If job, alternative A seems to strike a good balance with jobs and housing being at 1.05, the City Council has the means to restrict further office buildings to have a better balance between jobs and housing. I've been an environmental consultant my whole career, and I have to deal with facts and data, and what I'm not hearing very much about is the effects on the water, the wastewater, the traffic, the air pollution from the traffic, and the slow traffic on El Camino that will be exacerbated. I can't even imagine 50% more people on El Camino near, during the holidays. So I strongly oppose Measure C because I just don't think we have the water, the park space, the infrastructure, the transit to accommodate that. And approving such high levels of growth is going to severely degrade our quality of life. And so I really urge the city to come to some kind of compromise. Half of your constituents do not want the kind of growth presented in alternative C. So I hope that you can come to some kind of compromise. I'm not hearing a lot about that. It seems either black or white, and I don't think either.
Thank you very much. You're out of time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Max Motner.
Hello, I'm Max Motner. I'm a North Central resident and a homeowner, former Hillsdale renter. This is my first live public comment ever. The jobs-to-housing unit ratio is horrific in our city. It's getting worse. We're not a small city. We're the biggest in the county, and we desperately need housing density. I'm grateful that city councils like our own hold the keys through land use regulations to combat the housing crisis disproportionately impacting my generation who are priced out of the homeownership market. I've listened and reviewed the options. Please heed the Planning Commission's recommendations and choose Option C. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, we have no other hands raised.
Thank you very much. So we're going to close the public comment, bring it back to the process here. What's the next step, Mr. Doll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we can go ahead and pull the slide back up, also, if you would like, as we were hearing public comments, we were jotting down notes, and I can provide some clarifications or responses if, if the council desires some of the comments raised during public comments.
If you could do that, I think that would be very helpful.
Perfect. So a couple of points raised. I did want to note with regard to land use densities in our existing general plan versus proposed, existing land uses at, say, a high level are roughly correlating to the land uses that are at the medium density in the updated general plans. We did want to clarify that. So even if there's a current property that has a, say, a residential high, if it is being proposed for residential medium, that would still be consistent with its underlying density. Also, there are other constraints on some lots, so maybe they have a high potential density, but if they have a low height limit or FAR, that might otherwise limit achieving full density. So that is also something that we are factoring in. But one of the things, as noted earlier, that we will do following the council's recommendation on the land use map is go through the final preferred land use scenario to ensure that we are not actually downzoning or reducing density on any sites within our study areas. Another comment that was raised spoke to the two surveys that were referenced as part of our outreach effort, and we did want to note there was one survey prepared by True North that was, included a number of questions beyond the general plan update, but included some related to housing and circulation. That was a statistically significant survey. The other survey that was prepared by Placeworks and specific to the general plan update was an online survey. We did have some controls to limit who participated, but it was not a statistically significant survey. So we did want to clarify that of the two surveys that are referenced as part of our outreach, one was statistically significant, but the other one was not.
Mr. Doll, can I interject? It seemed that there was a question, I believe it came from Mr. Conway, who may need some clarification about what does it mean to be a statistic, what is a statistically significant survey? If you don't mind defining that further so that the public, including Mr. Conway, can understand how that relates to the demographic representation?
Yes, the goal of a statistically significant survey is to receive input from, for members of the community that roughly correlate to the demographic breakdown of the community. And, and so, and there is, if you, the True North survey did include a narrative that broke down how they did their sampling to ensure that it correlated to meet the requirements of being statistically significant and reaching all of the demographics that are present in the city of San Mateo's population. There are two other points here. I did want to clarify in our place types menu, for the highs, it does note 8+. And in the surveys, we had asked questions about 8 to 12. So if the council does want to set an upward height limit, if there are high-density land use designations selected, that could definitely be, be included. We would recommend focusing on density as that is the ultimate control, but I did want to clarify that of our place types menu versus the survey questions that we asked. There was a comment about the Hillsdale Mall grouping of properties and the Planning Commission recommendation. The PetSmart property, yes, we did, we would clarify that when you got to that discussion. That should be at mixed-use medium to reflect the Planning Commission's recommendation. So we'll note that again when that study area comes up for discussion. And then also, there was a comment relating to VMT and how we evaluate it in EIR. For evaluation of environmental impacts, there are standards that we need to follow that may not reflect more preference or policy choices. So for the EIR, we will, we will follow state standards where applicable and adopted legal thresholds for environmental impact evaluation. That does not preclude similar discussions and policies within, say, our general plan circulation element that can maybe drill into how we look at that at a local level. So it is important to clarify when we look at something as a policy and when we look at something as having an environmental impact. And I believe those were all of the notes that I had to clarify.
Zach, can I ask, because I heard a couple of times things came up regarding, well, asking for a phased approach to the building. And it just made me wonder because, isn't it, I mean, what do you think? Do you think that if we approve any one of the scenarios that they're going to get built out right away, or that it, some portion of it will be built out over the next 20 years? And possibly not all, but most likely not a big land rush of building everywhere all at once. It would actually in fact be phased just because of things that happen in the market? Like, let's say there's a lack of water. Would we approve projects if there's no water in the foreseeable future? Can you share on that a little bit?
Definitely. It is important to note that land use, the density and the height limits that are established, those establish development capacity. But the city isn't approving any actual development with a change in a land use map. That comes on parcel-by-parcel proposals as initiated by property owners and then going through the city's development review process. So a lot of our projections, they are exactly that, projections, but at the end of the day, each and every one of these parcels will only be developing at such time that the property owners wish to proceed, and then they would go through the city's standard development review process that's established, given the type of development they wish to proceed with. So inevitably, there's always going to be phasing. And it's really just establishing the capacity. And if we establish larger densities or work on streamlining processes, that could incentivize development to happen quicker. But at the end of the day, it is about the property owner and when they're ready to move forward.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Doll.
So going back to your original question, this is the format that staff would recommend, where we recommend starting with the circulation scenario, discussing that and providing staff with a direction on which is your preferred circulation scenario. And we have maps of each alternative in the PC recommendation and that we can pull up as, as needed to support your discussion. And then moving to the land use discussion, going study area by study area, and we can provide graphics as well as property owner requests that are associated with that study area. And so we're here to support your discussion and happy to interject or provide additional information or clarification as needed to support your discussion and then ultimately your motion for each area. So we would recommend starting with the, the circulation preferred scenario.
Thank you very much, Mr. Doll. Do we have anybody who wants to start on the circulation?
I just have a quick question through the mayor. On the mixed use, when we look at the definition of mixed use, it says, what does it say? Retail and/or office and/or housing. And we've heard a lot tonight about housing, which is not a new topic for us by any stretch. And I'm just wondering, it was never, or would we have the option to say mixed use was a preference of mixing, mixing housing and retail or something along those lines? How does that play out? Mixed use has to include all of them?
So if, through the mayor, in responding to that question, I think that's a very good clarification to make. The land use designation is the starting place. Under the land use designation, we will have a range of compatible zoning designations that get more specific, establish individual uses, site standards, densities within those, those umbrellas provided by the land use designation. So a mixed use designation could have all residential zoning, it could have commercial zoning, it could have mixed-use zoning. There's other ways that it can be focused in an area-by-area, parcel-by-parcel. It can also rely on the goals, policies, and actions that go into the land use element. So the land use map is not the only tool to focus how development occurs. And one topic that we are actually moving forward with ahead of the general plan is looking at minimum densities in mixed use. And that'll be a topic that comes back to council later, later this year. And if you set a policy that says you need a certain percentage of residential in a mixed-use project, that would apply to mixed use. So there will be further opportunities to clarify through goals and policies how these land uses can be applied. And in certain areas around the city, there may be certain limitations or other clarifications that are necessary to focus how the growth occurs.
So if I may just ask one more follow-up. So, and say, we set a certain policy, but then somebody comes to develop a certain parcel of property and say, look, this is the only way it's really going to work for us. We're going to need some, you know, office, we're going to need some residential. And in the meantime, we may have already set a policy where, like, we just wanted to see residential. How would that play out? Would we have to then make an exception at that point? Or?
Once uses are established, you would need potentially a general plan amendment if you wanted to change the land use or propose a project that goes beyond it. And so I think that's an important consideration with how specific versus how general you want to be when you look at what is allowed or isn't allowed. Because ultimately, if you're too prescriptive or focused, you might limit what's realistically feasible in the market.
But could you be penalized if you said, if somebody comes to you and you say, well, we'd really like to see more housing, and they say, well, we really can't build this unless it's office, and you as a city then want to impose additional housing being built in a certain location? Would we be, because conceivably, if we're mixed use and we're general enough, then what somebody brings forward would comply with what we've been general about, right? So we're not necessarily, we could demand that housing be built?
That could occur, and that was actually some interesting feedback we received at our developer roundtable as part of the housing element this past fall, was that oftentimes property value is based upon the land use and the allowable uses on that site. And so if you have a zoning or a land use that allows office, which right now is the most valuable use that can be built on a property, based on what we've been hearing from developers and property owners, the property value is going to be key to that. But if we're establishing requirements where it's a mixed-use zoning and you need to, say, achieve 40% residential or 50% residential, that property value would be adjusted accordingly to look at that type of development. So in some ways, there, it's, it's two-way. You, you need to make sure you're not too, you're precluding the ability of the market to redevelop, but at the same point, the uses that we want to see can guide the valuation of that property as well.
Okay, thank you. I just needed some clarification as we go forward because there was a lot of that, that blue that was in the various maps, and I was like, so what does this mean exactly? Does it mean we're going to see housing there? Okay, thank you for that kind of backdrop. So what does this mean exactly? Does it mean we're going to see housing there? Okay, thank you for that kind of backdrop, if you will. All right. So are we going into the circulation stuff?
Are you going to put up the maps for the circulation element, Zach?
Yes, we can queue those up. And we've got A, B and C as well as the the planning commission alternative recommendation.
Thank you. Are you going to provide any narrative here?
So if you would like, we can definitely, we provided a brief overview, but if the council would like, we can do a brief overview again of what each one looks like.
What did the, what did the, what did the general plan subcommittee weigh in? They did, right?
Yes. It still has the planning commission.
Right. But I want to know about the subcommittee. They did a, they chose C, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I would, I would, I can live with C. And I think we do have to provide for S B 1000 though. That's kind of where I am on it.
I'll, I'll just dovetail on that. I, I was really, I was really grateful for the work of the subcommittee and the planning commissioner. I thought that there was. Really well conceived and well, well articulated ideas and 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 support for the direction. Which chose alternative C, but also took the the really necessary and strong parts of. Of alternative A to prioritize the pedestrian improvements and and the bike crossings. So I, I think that. Like we got the best of all worlds with that addition. And and I am so. So pleased to see the focus on S B 1000 and the suggestion specifically to create a plan for the North Central neighborhood around circulation. That was something that. I asked for during the the bike lane project. And so the potential to fold that level of analysis and to support North Central to. To figure out how we can implement our master plans in the context of North Central, I think is. Is so important. And and I was really happy to see that being elevated. So I, I. I am strongly in support of the planning commission recommendation and and specifically there those components.
Eric, I see your hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we as a council always talk about how important it is to. How important our pedestrian and bicycle master plan is and how. Residents are constantly bringing up to us how important pet and bike safety is to their neighborhoods. And there is so much work that needs to be done to make our streets safer and more walkable. But if you look at where the money goes at a high level, it has traditionally been spent on larger. Regional projects like like a new Caltrain station. And last mile infrastructure has really been neglected historically, in my opinion. And there's only so much money to go around. For all of these reasons, I think that actually scenario A makes the most practical sense. I see C as just a nice wish list, listing everything. If we had unlimited funding, it would be great. But that's just not how we've seen the process work. And it sounds like this this council is heading towards C. If if we do go that route. I I think that we should stipulate that we are going to be prioritizing the the improvements in A, local and orientated improvements first. And we will aim for C, but we do not move forward on the regional hub level projects until we were making significant progress on the. On the local level improvements. And and when and if we have excess funds, we can always go above and beyond. I think that that is a practical approach that that would 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 strike a good compromise between this this wish list that everybody wants. I also, although I don't like the name Super Block, I really like the idea of of pedestrian oriented. Blocks, car free blocks of C. And I would, I would advocate for putting that in the A as well. So that's where I stand on this.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Gothols.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with the recommendation of the planning commission and the subcommittee. Alternative C. With with the comments from Deputy Mayor Papen and Lee about incorporating the local. Pedestrian improvements, which I I agree with Councilmember Rodriguez are very important. I think that the order in which they they end up getting funded depends on whether we get matching dollars from the federal government and things like that. Sometimes we get regional dollars from the T A. And and there's a reason for that because those are projects that. Have regional priority and that's sometimes why they get funded first. But I, I appreciate that reality.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Gothols. I I'd like to say that. I understand Councilmember Rodriguez's comments very clearly because I think. Getting down and doing all that local pedestrian and bicycle work in the neighborhoods to make it safer for handicapped or aged. For kids to ride their bikes without, you know, being wiped out, then that is something when I look at the map. For alternative C, I'm seeing those kind of improvements all over the map. As with anything else, what I know is that we're always subject to funding. And everybody that watched the presentation regarding our budget earlier knows. That we're not currently in possession of a lot of funding for all of these things. But we're, we're looking forward to the future, I think optimistically on many different levels with both housing and transportation circulation improvements here. Thinking that the federal government, the state government, which has been having some. Some budget surpluses, the federal government, which has recently designated a whole lot of money. For, I I believe what will be these kinds of improvements. And knowing that something like Seamless Bay Area, the improvements of mass transit will make a huge difference. In getting people where they need to be without a car, which will make our streets once again less congested and safer. So I'm supporting C and I'm also supporting the S B 1000. And but I also, I mean, I do agree that we need to make an effort, staff, we need to make an effort. To see that the funding we get does filter down and continue to meet the needs in the neighborhoods as well. Thank you. So shall we go on to land use now?
We would be looking for a motion on on the preferred circulation scenario.
Do we, do we have a motion?
I'm moved that we adopt C with the S B one and I, I'm. Did you want to prioritize pedestrian improvements, especially over U S 101 and 92?
Second.
Well, that was a question.
Oh, yes, I do.
Yeah. So I mean. I think that invites a little more discussion. I didn't say prioritize, but I want to make sure. You know, that as we're going through the projects and the money, and like I said earlier, this will take a decade, if not more to do. Right? So as things are happening, we need to not forget the neighborhoods as we have not been. We've been doing this work already. Okay, we just need to continue it. So I don't know if it needs to be a separate part of the motion. I think. The Public Works Director, the City Manager, everybody already understands this. So it's up to you.
I would, I would concur with that. Let's, let's give ourselves some liberality here as things come forward.
Thank you.
I would do the C with the S B 1000.
Is that seconded?
Second.
I have a second.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll call, please.
Deputy Mayor Papen.
Yes.
Councilmember Gothols.
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
No.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla.
Yes.
Motion carries for one.
Thank you.
All right, through the mayor, we are now moving to the land use alternatives. And we will start with land use alternative one north, which is the study area one is broken up into three sections because it does cover the El Camino Real corridor. And so the first subsection of study area one is El Camino Real North. And so we do have our three alternatives right here, which and then if we go to the next slide, we've got our planning commission recommendation. And I don't believe we have any property owner requests in this study area.
And this one was general plan subcommittee voted for B by a vote of six to one. Is that right?
I believe that is correct. Joanna, if you're able to weigh in, I don't have that matrix in front of me. Yes.
Okay, I can live with the. Alternate, alternative B for this area.
Yeah, I was there and we did vote six to one as the general plan update committee. In a, in reviewing the records, I see the planning commission also supported this. So I'm.
I'll second the deputy mayor's motion.
I, I agree as well, but I, I want to make sure that we're also. We're also including support for the noted changes, which, which I think were very important to the discussion.
I am not, I am not. DeSavilla already has a 12 story. Built apartment building right there. I would not advocate for another high residential right next door to it. So I would not advocate for that. I'm picking what the general plan subcommittee did, which is voted for alternative B as is.
There are other, there were other components that were recommended as well. So I think, I think it might be worth discussing them.
Okay, let's have some additional. Well, we have a motion though, don't we? I believe we do. Was that motion seconded?
I mean, do you, would.
I didn't even hear. I think it was like a forced motion. It was a question and then it was like turned into a motion. What was?
Okay, do we have an actual motion? Open for discussion.
Just so you know, I moved, we adopt scenario B for this area. And there was a second, and then there were questions after that.
Good. So we're, we're having discussion on the motion.
Yeah, so through the mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
On this, I, I remember we had a really good discussion about this in the general plan subcommittee. And and the majority did go down over B, but there were a couple of key changes that were proposed. And I. I don't, I, I was not the, the, it wasn't the height one. It was, I think it was. I'm looking at my notes. I'm having, I'm not finding them, but I, I think it had to do with. Come back to me. I'll, I'll go back to my notes. Sorry about that. But I, I do, I would like to discuss this a little bit more because I think that there's some optimization that could be here besides just going for B all out.
So I, so I, I watched some of the meetings and I'm going to have some notes here to refer to. So maybe this will jog your memory. Jump in anytime. So one of the things that was discussed was, was the pop, you know, Poplar's site and. The air, the area is currently a zone commercial neighborhood at Poplar and it's a gas station and it's surrounded by residential medium. And so the suggestion was to change it to mixed use medium, which would be consistent with the surrounding heights.
Yes, that was.
Was that, was that the one you were thinking of?
That was the one I was thinking of.
Okay. And then there was another one maybe that you had in mind, which was. The, the, the El Cerrito Avenue. And it was, it's currently businesses, right? And that if you incorporate it into the mixed use medium zoning designation from alternative C, it will allow those businesses to. Remain, which was, I think, a really strong consideration is was making sure that our existing thriving businesses have a chance to remain. And also will provide walkable access to those retail shops along the residential corridor.
Those two changes make sense to me personally.
My only concern is that that one would be a high use as opposed to a mixed use medium.
Incorporating the mixed use medium zoning. So that would be.
Okay, for, for that corner, right? The El Cerrito and Tilton?
Yes.
Okay. And then the same thing for Poplar, right?
Poplar, yes, would be mixed use medium as well.
Okay, I can live with that.
And then, you know, that, that part that you're, that you were talking about on. San Pablo Road or DeSavilla Road. Is, it is, as you said, surrounded by residential high and a medical building. And so it would be arguably consistent, more consistent to upzone.
Well, my feeling was the impact on a neighborhood that already has a lot of high residential. So you have 12 stories there. Then you have the Regent just across the street, which is also a 12 story building. So from my perspective, another 12 story building where you already had two right there. I wasn't going to be find acceptable. So that's why I was not, I did not think that that we should put one right there.
I think it would be a possible up to 12 story building.
I know there are two that already exist in that very spot. So that's why I was not in agreement that we should put. You can even call it up to 12 stories. That is an area that already has a lot of high rise buildings. And if you want to come two more blocks. There's another one that is about eight stories. And if you want to come one more block, you'll have two that are 15 stories. So you've got a lot of high rises already in that area.
I think, you know, from an urban planning perspective and an aesthetic perspective. It, it makes sense to have some consistency. And and so we have taken great pains to protect the, the R one neighborhoods. And not include them in the study areas we're talking about.
I think what you're missing is the impact on the neighborhood to have that kind of volume where there already is a lot of volume. That's what I'm suggesting. Not that it would be out of place, but rather that there's a tremendous amount of impact in that area already. Literally gridlock on that street already.
Okay, so.
I am suggesting that part should not be added.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. And remind me, who was the second?
Gothols.
Gothols, were you the second, Joe?
Yes, yes, I was.
So I'm not, I, I think we should call for the question on this and have a vote. If it passes, yes. Otherwise, we come back with something else.
Mr. Mayor, I, I withdraw my second because I want us to finish this conversation. I want to hear. I, I, I feel like we're, we're very divided on this and I want to make sure that. We've. We get a little bit more towards a majority opinion on on this issue.
Thank you.
So the motion that I would be willing to make at this moment in time is a motion that would be B with those two changes that came. That would be a medium use, medium high, is that right? At Tilton and El Cerrito and a medium high at Poplar, just not another residential high at Seven DeSavilla.
And I will second that motion.
I think it was, it's mixed use medium is what you, did you mean to say?
Yeah, did I say it wrong? Sorry. Yes, mixed use medium.
I knew what you meant.
Okay, so and we have a second there. Is there further discussion? Okay, then we'll go to the vote. Madam Clerk, please call them all.
Okay, this is for alternate B with two amendments. Deputy Mayor Papen.
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Gothols.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
And Mayor Bonilla.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, through the mayor, the next study area is study area one central. Um, this is the stretch of El Camino um just to the south of downtown, running to um uh the this ninety-two interchange. So we do have three alternatives that range, and then we also have our planning commission recommendation. And I think the 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 key point here is for Boral Square, um they recommended the mixed use high. And then also on the 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 west side of, you know, I believe they were looking for the the higher, the medium and high dense, or I believe it's high density, mixed use along there. And you can also see in this area, we do have a number of housing element opportunity sites and a couple of pipeline projects as well.
I guess my, I I I'm fine with the one at Boral. Um, I have some reservations about the one on the west side of El Camino. Um, so I would be more inclined to go with what the subcommittee did.
Yeah, Zach, Zach, can you?
Yeah.
Let us know what the subcommittee did there.
So for one C, it did look like it was um majority B, but then there was a number of of GPS numbers that kind of were picking elements from both B and C.
Yeah, that's what I show in my notes.
Through the mayor, um.
Yes.
And you put up the three scenarios with it or the, yes. Um, so um I wanted to throw out um. I support alternative B, but um had the, having mixed use medium on El Camino instead of the the high residential. And um let's see what is on here. And yeah, and that's the only change. That's the only change.
So it sounds like C after you're done looking at it, Eric. You have the mixed use C, a medium on C.
Except it doesn't have the. Yeah, well, maybe it does.
Now, we could uh. No, because I think you wanted Boral to have um mixed use and not just be office, is that correct?
Exactly.
And then what about the?
So it's kind of the, I guess it's kind of a combination.
So it sounds like you want C with mixed use at Boral.
Looking at the difference.
Is it mixed use high or is it?
Well, I.
It's next to the freeway.
Yeah.
I can live with that, but what about this one that's right next to Central Park, which on B is high uh mixed use? And then on C, it is medium. Would you like to still keep it high? Isn't that already come to planning and been accepted or?
No, it hasn't. The there was a proposal years ago, but it died.
Okay, okay, thanks. I I couldn't remember. So the question is, would you still like to have that be mixed high? Like it isn't B?
Well, the apartment building next to it is four stories and it's right next to Central Park, so um.
So you want it to be.
Oh, no, wait a minute. No, no, no. This is south of Ninth Avenue. It's a dental office. And it's um a few other small, look like residential buildings, but they've been converted to business uses. That's what's on that block.
Now, the one that's the 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 brightest blue there, the butts.
That one. Is it that one you're talking about?
Yeah, that that abuts Central Park, doesn't it?
Yes, no, it's across the street from Central Park.
If if I could, um just through the chair, it's very difficult to see, but this is study area four to the north here, and I believe there's one more parcel.
Yes, there is.
Central Park is here.
Yes.
And so there's one more parcel outside of the border of study area one.
And that's the dental office with the other smaller.
So Rick was right, Rick was right. It's where the where the the Palm Reader is and stuff.
Yes, right.
Okay, so do you want that to be high or medium?
Were you asking?
I think that can be, I mean, my opinion, it can be medium because in this case, medium is uh four to seven stories, right? So I think that's uh okay, given what we're seeing uh just to the east of it, it's also four stories. Um, and just to the south of it is the Sunrise Assistant Living there, which is also, I think, four stories. Um. And like I said, that particular area right there is not a lot of very tall buildings. So I would go for the tall building, but I think that the likelihood of it changing uh in terms of its neighbors uh changing to anything that would kind of complement that is unlikely, so.
So you prefer the medium?
Yeah.
All right, so what we have now is that it would look like C all the way down until Boral and then it would be uh, did you say high mixed use?
Yeah, that's that's what's in D.
Yeah. I I agree, supporting um high mixed use at Boral makes the most sense to me.
Okay, so we've got uh I I can make a motion if you'd like, that it would be um C with the change that Boral is mixed use high.
Second.
Okay, if you're ready for the vote, um Deputy Mayor Pappen?
Yes.
Councilmember Gothos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, then the last part of study area one is El Camino Real South. And so this is this um a short segment of El Camino, south of the hill, at the bottom of Hillsdale area, and then running to study area two, which is um Molly Stone um Belmonte Bowl area. So we are, it's a relatively small segment um that makes up the southern stretch of study area one. And so then we have our our three land use alternatives, and then we also have the planning commission's recommendation.
You had five votes for the subcommittee on this one to go with uh B?
Yes, that is, that is correct.
You had one change from the planning commission that requested that there's a residential low along Thirty-seventh Avenue, and they requested that be made to mixed use low. Can you show us where that might be?
Yeah, so you're looking at the planning commission recommendation?
Yeah, they wanted something changed to a mixed use low, which I think should be probably not a big deal. It's residential low now.
Yes, they were highlighting mixed use to allow for a little bit more flexibility on Thirty-seventh.
Where is it on?
C.
Stay in B, yeah. Okay. I mean, I I can live with that. I don't know about everybody else, but.
I think that makes sense to me as well.
So should we make a motion to approve B with the change that um that one area on Thirty-seventh be mixed use low instead of just residential low?
I would second it if you make that motion.
Okay.
Yeah, I I support that change. There was another recommendation, though, to um change the Olympic Village site and on Forty-second to from residential low to residential medium to make it more consistent.
That's in our next uh plan. This is, we're still in study area one.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, then I I'm, yeah, I think we're ready for a vote.
Okay, Deputy.
So what's the change just being suggested here?
See where that little yellow, I mean, that tan part is on uh B? That would become um low mixed use, so that color would be, I forget what color it is here. Oh, it'd be light blue. Thank you.
Oh, like the blue there, residential, I mean, mixed use low.
You got it.
Versus right now, it's residential low. Okay, yeah, I think that's okay.
Okay, good. So we'll take the vote.
Deputy Mayor Pappen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gothos?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, we are now moving to study area two, Belmonte, Molly Stone area. This is um at the south end of of the city um along our our border with Belmont and encompasses the areas on both sides of El Camino in this area. And then, as you can see, we do have a number of housing element um of alt- adequate sites in here. So it's important to make sure that we allow for housing in any of our um preferred scenario land uses. And you can see, we've we've got our a range here with um low and moderate and mediums. And then we've got our planning commission recommendation um which did make a few adjustments. Um, it actually looked at a mixed use low along that that stretch of parcels um right along Belmont, and then it adjusted some others to residential medium in that um that little grouping of three. Um, one thing staff would just want to note here um with this context is to be sensitive as you have a a a number of properties that slope up the hill, um so we want to be sensitive how these lower areas interact with the 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 neighborhoods behind um in this area here, but just something to consider when you're looking at the the right level of intensity in this area.
Can you use your cursor, Zach, to mark what you're talking about there?
So we've got these three right there. We've got these three parcels right here in the planning commission recommendation that we're um looking at residential medium. Um, we just wanted to note, this area kind of sits at the foot is, and then you get a slope backward into those single families behind. You do have some low debt city residential on those, or um I believe there's actually the the shopping center. It's, I think it's Olympic, I I the name of it's slipping right now for that square shaped parcel that's shown as residential medium here. So and these are all lower scale buildings, I believe. It's two and three story on the the multifamily residential on that that kind of longer boot shaped block just below the single family.
Okay, and I see that the planning commission recommended changing the building at, the blue building at the south end, the blue area at the south end there, just here at that, uh down to a mixed use um low, to create a better transition to the low lying residential neighborhood in Belmont across the street. That's what I'm seeing on the notes from the planning commission here.
What is that?
Yes.
So right now, what is that with the stripes? It's hard to tell what color it is there, Zach. What is that designation there? In C on the south end, what is that current designation?
The cur- well, as it currently exists, these are various commercial businesses. I I believe this is um.
I know, I know that. I know that, but what is the proposed designation that's shown on the on this drawing?
For the planning commission recommend, it's mixed use low.
Okay, is that what you're showing there, mixed use low?
Yeah, the that that rectangular shape that's adjacent to Belmont is mixed use low.
Okay, good, thank you. Yeah.
I I can take those changes.
I second, if that's a motion.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Pappen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gothos?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, so moving to study area three, this is is probably the most complex as it is rather large and encompass includes a number of areas, includes both the Hayward Park Caltrain Station and um that that kind of northeast corner. And then we have the Hillsdale Caltrain Station more to the south, and then the Hillsdale Mall area. And then it does also include the Bay Meadows area. So with the Bay Meadows area, the um the land uses are all consistent with the specific plan in that area. Um, and so this, there's a lot of different pieces here. There was also some discussions um at the planning commission about the service commercial that is kind of along the Palm area, adjacent to the Caltrain corridor. Um, we would just note that the use, more than other types of uses, are at are harder to transition to other uses for a number of factors. Um, so we would just want to highlight that and we're happy to elaborate further if need be. Um, so we also have our three alternatives in this area.
So the subcommittee, if I may interrupt, the subcommittee went with uh five voted for alternative C, right?
Yes, I believe that is correct.
That's right. That's what I'm saying in my notes.
Yeah, okay, all right. So you had a pretty, you know, you had a majority there, but what do you mean?
And and so we do have a, and this does, this study area does include um the land use request um from um David Bohannon and in that his group um for the three, for his holdings of properties, it's eleven area, eleven total. And they are requesting a combination of mixed use high and transitioning to mixed use medium as it moves west toward the adjacent single family neighborhoods. Uh, one clarification we did want to note on the um planning commission recommend recommended land use map was there is the PetSmart site. Um, if you can note that it's shown as mixed use low where to align with the planning commission recommendation, that should be mixed use medium.
So did you say this did include the request of the high and then stepping down for the Hillsdale Mall?
Yes, this does include the 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 property owner request there. What we would recommend in this area is ultimately um a specific plan, whether it's a new specific plan or updating the existing specific plan, the Hillsdale Station specific plan, um to kind of get more focused on how these uses could occur and then transition to the neighborhoods. Um, so we'll, we will formulate a way to highlight this area as being further addressed in a specific plan and maybe do some initial numbers to correlate with these land uses for the EIR, but then noting in our goals and policies that the final outcome would be addressed as when the specific plan is updated, if if that's an account, approach that council's on board with.
So Zach, let me ask, is the specific plan where you're thinking that the step down from the mixed use medium to the residential area would occur?
Yeah.
Where you would specify that?
Yeah, the the other piece here that we would want to highlight is this is a, an important regional commercial area that we want to make sure continues to have the opportunity to exist here. So we would also, um speaking to mixed use, want to highlight how these uses break down and that we're not going to be losing this regional commercial center, which is really an important area for the city and to serve the neighborhoods as well. So those are topics that could be best addressed within a specific plan context.
Through the mayor, I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, so my my big concern with this, with this um area is how it abuts the the single family neighborhoods and that the the tradish, the transition and how it's done, to me, is is extremely important. Um, can you, i- if we do um approve this uh this particular scenario that we're seeing on the screen right now, and then we we dig in later on with a specific plan for this site, um can you help me feel uh better about how that that process will go to make sure that we're kind of balancing the twin goals we have of making sure that that this area is is vibrant and and in terms of the the shopping center feasible, but also the concerns of the neighborhood um that's right. that's right there that are really concerned about the impacts? How would that process go?
In, within the general plan update, a good approach would be to start with the land use map, but then also to look at a goal and a set of policies for, that would then translate or guide the preparation of the update to the specific plan. So within those policies, you might look at how you're transitioning down to adjacent residential or neighborhood edges or certain components or intensities that are included as part of this overall specific plan. So you can kind of go beyond what a land use designation on a specific parcel could offer if you're, say, putting a mixed use to then clarify how you're envisioning that mixed use breaking down in this area. And you could start with setting parameters as a goal or goals and then associated policies and actions that would then guide that future update to the specific plan. So if the council wanted to include guidance to staff as to how some, a goal and some policies might look when addressing this area, we could factor that into what gets drafted and then you would have a chance to look at that this coming fall when the goals, policies and actions come back to the council for consideration. So it would start with the land use now.
So we would approve the land use now and then work out the details later. But before everything's approved, we would have those goals in place.
For this particular area, highlighting that it should be further refined as part of a specific plan or highlighting the boundaries of the existing Hillsdale Station area specific plan and noting that further clarification could come could be a way to note on the land use map that these, there's still further refinements to how these land uses are applied in this area.
My, a concern I have is that when we start getting into this area, and especially when we're talking at heights that can be up to 12 stories, I guess. Like, we're in an area now where, where I think that we're running, we're really running the risk of voters not approving this. And so that's, I mean, we can downplay it again like we did with Major Y, but I, I think we might be making a mistake here. And so it's just, it's, a lot of the details are, need to be worked out. And is it eight stories? Is it 12 stories? So this, this area, as you said, is the most complex, and I think we have the most, most of balance here. So I don't, I don't know what that looks like, what we approved tonight, but I really have those concerns.
So I'd like to weigh in here a little bit with a couple of things, if I might. When I looked at that, that blue color there, the mixed use high, eight plus stories, 100 to 200 dwelling units break of the density, as Zach mentioned earlier, and as we've learned, is really the key because we know that at, for instance, Kikku Crossing in seven floors, you're getting 225 units on one acre. So I don't think it's necessarily going to be a 12 story building, although I do know that there are some plans to allow some open space on the ground throughout that area so that there can be a pedestrian experience as well as, you know, the experience that may be in whatever uses are there, including retail, office, mixed use, mixed use setting. I want to also go back a little bit. I believe that in the most recent letter that Bohannon Company sent, they spoke about right there on the very southern end of this area where they're right now, you see it's kind of a curvy down there, yeah. That property is currently part of the Hillsdale Garden Apartments, but Bohannon requested in their letter that that be included as I think it is some of the mixed use medium. Because he's a, he's a partner in holding on that land along with the owner. And I think we should, we should ask that that map here be corrected to include that area right there. I mean, or we can, it's up to us. They're asking that we do that. They want to know if they can, you know, Bohannon wants to be able to have the ability to try and have some flexibility on that area, which kind of squares off the site they're working on.
Practically speaking, it makes, it just makes more sense. It's more feasible to plan on a grid and it, unless that wavy line is a street, a wavy line street.
It's a creek.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, I, I, I would agree that it, it makes sense to include the whole parcel. If, you know, if that has been in fact cut off.
We would go to the, to the street there? Is that what you're trying?
Yeah, down to 36th.
Okay, I'm okay with that part of it. I, I recognize that there's probably more work to be done. Is it that we are looking at planning commission, because the planning commission one is slightly different than C. So is it that we're looking at the planning commission one? And that does, I think that does the tier down that we are suggesting. It would be, you see where the dark blue is?
Yes, right. It does, that does include what Bohannon is calling the step down at, at the back along the residential area. Right?
Right, yeah.
And I, Eric, your hand's still up. Are you waiting to talk? No, okay. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think that I, I agree and appreciate the concern that Councilmember Rodriguez is raising in terms of, you know, it's hard to make these decisions without having gone through the, the policy goals and know how, how they're going to in fact be interpreted. And so I think, you know, Deputy Mayor Pappen raised the concern about mixed use and how do we enforce, you know, the, the creation of housing on mixed use without the policies? How do we enforce a good design guidelines that graduate intensity towards transit and decrease intensity towards established neighborhoods? So, you know, I, I appreciate the, the concern there, but I, I think that you know, I, I trust that we'll go through that process and, and that there's actually a lot of alignment in terms of the, the policy goals we're trying to achieve to strike those balances. And so I'm, I support the recommendations of the subcommittee and the planning commission and the, the proposed amendments. And so I'd like to make that motion.
Well, can we talk about the other ones as we go outside of Hillsdale Station? I mean, Hillsdale Mall, can you just talk me through those other ones that the planning commission made? So for example, I, I don't mind designating Concorde Passage to mirror already pending projects. That's fine. Fourth year cursor as I go through them. In there. Okay, so you've already made that designation. Okay, I'm with you. The next one was change the area west of Hayward Park Caltrain Station from mixed use high to mixed use medium. So that little slipper right there.
Yeah, the little orange slipper there. Yeah, right.
Okay. And why was that?
I wasn't there. My feeling is it looks like it should be blue like the rest of it.
Right, I think it was an issue of consistency with that, with the surrounding designation.
So if I may, through the mayor, that particular triangular piece is a pipeline project that is a housing project. And so that is why in looking closely, we realized that should, the land use should align with the pipeline project that's currently proposed. So that is the reason why that particular one is shown as a residential medium.
Are, are we sure? Because I know that IBW Local 617, which owns the corner of Leslie and 17th there has told me they're not going to change their use and they're not going anywhere. They own a good part of that block.
Now, they're, they're south of there, though. This one is north of where they are.
No, that's right, it's 17th and Leslie. The, the orange triangle is 17th on the north side and Leslie heading south to the train. The train station's right there.
You're right.
Yeah.
A mixed use medium would still be consistent because a mixed use medium and a residential medium have the same level of density that goes along with them. So either, either of those land uses would be compatible with that pipeline.
They say they're changing from mixed use high to mixed use medium.
Yeah, I think that's okay.
Okay. And then they wanted to change Safeway from medium to high. And I wondered why, what happened there?
It's, it's only a quarter mile from the station. It's a big lot. It could provide a lot of housing right on the corner of El Camino, which is across the street from that big bank building. Anyway, there's two big buildings there on the corner of three, there's already two big buildings on that intersection. So.
And I think there was discussion about those, those two banks being good buffers in terms of those natural transitions that we're looking for.
Right.
So this is a site that is, you know, very close to high quality transit that could handle that intensity on a large lot.
Right.
Are, are we sure that that area is not impacted enough with two high rises just across the street? So that's kind of what I brought up before. It's not so much how it looks, but can the area handle the impact? So that's my question.
I believe it can. I mean, Safeway itself already draws more cars coming and going every day, all day than any kind of a, I think, what is it, mixed use high? If it has residential uses there, there would be much, much fewer cars coming than it would as a commercial use.
Where's Safeway gonna go?
Good question, but I mean, it's up to them. If they want to decide they want to sell it because the developer has paid an offer, that's up to them.
But I gotta eat, Rick.
Go to Dreggers.
That's a little rich for my blood. So that's my.
Wolf Indian stores.
You know, that's my concern. I'll, I'll listen to the rest of the council on that one, see how they feel about that one.
You know, for that matter, I've seen safeways and other stores on the ground floors of other taller mixed use buildings. They can, they can still be there. In fact, Dregger is planning to stay there on his building over there on Fourth Avenue underneath some other uses.
And when people live above the Safeway, they won't be driving there.
No, they just walk down.
And getting on the elevator.
I think.
No, no, talking aside, that, that market does serve a whole bunch of surrounding community that would, many would have to drive to get there and all, and all, you know, and all candor. And would it, could you be able to go subterranean? Eric, what are you going to chime in on?
Well, I, I was just going to say, I, I think you bring up a good point, and I know that, I know that other communities, I believe Palo Alto had this big, big discussion because what happens is we're up zoning all of these, these these plots and all of a sudden, it's, it's not feasible to really have a grocery store unless or, or it's feasible, but it's not as lucrative as other uses. And so I, I wonder if, I, I am worried, not necessarily that that area can't take that, that density, but more are we, are we going to be driving out our, our grocery stores? And, and I'm wondering if, if, if we, yeah, of course, it could be the ground store, ground floor grocery store and then, you know, people living above it, but that might not happen if we don't, you know, make sure that, that it happens. So.
I think that's what they have in Millbrae right now. And Safeway with other uses above it, I believe. No? Oh, it's, it's above a parking place. That's what it is. Okay. But like I said, it's not uncommon. I've seen a lot of buildings, new building.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, two quick examples. One is the Whole Foods in Bay Meadows, which is part of a mixed use transit oriented development, works very well. And it doesn't have a massive street level parking lot. It has some underground, it has some surrounding neighborhood. A lot of people walk there. I walk to my, to, to Whole Foods from where I live. The other is in our Concorde Project at Concorde in Delaware. We, again, incorporated Trader Joe's into a mixed use project. It's, it's going to work very well. They're going to have plenty of parking. With those two examples, I don't have an issue with the original recommendation.
But I still miss Traggs.
I agree with Joe.
Okay, let's proceed.
I, I miss Traggs with the original owner who ran it well.
Okay. So it looks like you have your three votes or three people that want.
Okay, so I make a motion to go with the planning commission recommendation.
Second.
You have to, you have to add that part that just south to your motion.
Oh, and we should change the little triangle at 17th and Leslie to mixed use medium.
And then the other part with the Hillsdale Garden Apartments.
The Hillsdale Garden Apartments, we need to add that to square off that block at the south end of the Hillsdale Shopping Center.
I support that motion, but I, with, I, is there some room at all to discuss AUSAM and the affordable housing opportunity, which is also in that area?
What are we showing at AUSAM right now?
Right, so, so at this point, it's zone commercial if, if my.
It's the blue and, yeah, mixed use medium, right?
Yeah, so, so that would disallow residential.
No, it wouldn't. No.
Commercial zoning is not.
Mixed use medium can have residential.
Where are you? I don't think you're looking at the same parcel where AUSAM is.
Zach, we've got to have affordable housing at AUSAM's. Make it happen, Zach.
Am I, Zach, am I misreading the map here? And I, I am looking at AUSAM's as being zoned in commercial only. Do I have that wrong?
The AUSAM's goes from the El Camino, a good chunk of it goes to the railroad border. So the front half is that commercial designation, and then the back half is medium residential. So if you wanted to redesignate as a mixed use medium, that would, that would allow for the flexibility to accommodate what they're proposing while still keeping potential commercial viability along El Camino if there's an opportunity for it.
Okay, your cursor's not where AUSAM's is, though.
It's just south of that red spot on 25th Avenue there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is now brown. And so you're going to make it blue.
Okay, so if, if we're comfortable with that being included in, in the motion, I think that, that's a great addition.
That'll be medium and mixed use high. Right next to is mixed use high.
Yeah, it could be mixed use high and, because it goes right up against the tracks. And on the other side is, I believe, just some landscaping.
I like mixed use high there. I'm not crazy about it at Safeway, but I'm willing to be flexible.
Yeah.
I'm okay with it at AUSAM's.
Because it's the event center, which is far away from the back of that building on the other side of the tracks.
Great. I'm with it.
Mixed use high at AUSAM's.
Okay, so that's our motion.
And then do you also want to, as part of the motion, address the Bohannon request for the PetSmart site, which is, we wanted to correct it as mixed use medium.
Yes, and we want to fill in the corner there, too.
Yes, we have that.
Alrighty, are you ready?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Gothols?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes, with reservations.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes, wholeheartedly.
Deputy Mayor Pappen?
Yes, but if I lose my Safeway, there'll be problems.
Motion carries five zero, and just so council knows, none of those comments go into the minutes.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're on to study area four.
So study area four, this is the downtown area and encompasses the same areas, the downtown area specific plan or area plan and includes the, the Caltrain Station as well as Central Park. And then we have three alternatives here, and really alternative C aligned with the theme, we did focus growth there because of its proximity to the downtown Caltrain Station. And then we also have the planning commission recommendation. And I, one of.
What did the general plan subcommittee do with it? I want you to go there first. They put in a lot of time.
The general plan subcommittee, four were in favor of alternative C, and then there was a couple other mixes between B and C and then one with A and C.
Okay. So let's go to the, the C first and see what it looks like.
So you can see here, we do have a couple of pipeline projects as well as adequate sites in our, our housing element, um, sites inventory. So that is alternative C, and then Planning Commission Recommendation, um, started with alternative C, but then they did um increase um the land use on Third and Fourth to the east of downtown, and then they also did increase, um, I believe, to mixed-use high along B Street, um, just to the south of downtown or the south portion there.
Through the mayor, if I may ask.
Eric, please go ahead, sorry.
Thanks. Um, we, uh, the General Plan Subcommittee had a great uh conversation about this, I believe, and I'm not sure how many people watched, watched that meeting, but um, it, it focused around um, how important design standards are. Um, whereas if, if we create design standards that, that only allow very beautiful buildings that, that people want to look at, um, not like a lot of the buildings that we're seeing prop up along the peninsula. That I, I think that there, a lot of residents, the majority of residents would be okay with them. Um, I think when you think of big bulky buildings, you're not thinking of beautiful buildings, you're thinking of, of, of those blocks. And, and this, and, and yes, I, in this downtown, uh, the, the downtown historical center is quote-unquote preserved, but it's surrounded by what could be really, really tall buildings. So um, I think if we, if this is done right, um, C would work. Um, but if it's, if it's done wrong, we could be, we can be creating a big mess. And so this is yet another one of these ones where, where it's gonna depend, uh, it's gonna really depend on what we do later on. We can go either way right now, but it's gonna be really important to, um, it's gonna be really important to get the design standards right. Um, can you, can you explain the differences uh again about on C and what the uh Planning Commission recommend?
Sure. Joanna, could you go to the Planning Commission matrix? If we get a chance, because I think that articulates the specific changes they folded in. So yeah, it was a Third and Fourth um on that eastern stretch, just to the east of downtown. Um, then the mixed-use high on B Street. And then general support for updating the downtown specific plan in the future, which would be the next step following an update in the general plan.
Okay, um, can, can you tell me, can you talk a little bit more about how, about design standards and how we make the reality of, of having maybe taller, denser, more, more beautiful buildings that, that contribute to the downtown versus um, not ugly buildings? Like what, if, if we do um approve C or some form of it, how, what would be the next steps uh in this process?
In this process, I think, starting with our, our goals, policies and actions and starting to articulate what that, those standards should look like, um, that could start with the objective design standards. That is focused on residential and mixed-use projects with a residential component. But there's nothing that says that we couldn't transition to then updating our overall design standards for all projects downtown to start to align with what is contained in the general plan. So we have um goals and policies that could be within the land use element, but I would think a lot of these would live within our urban design element where we can focus on um concepts such as pedestrian experience, scale, other critical design components that could help achieve the vision that you're, you're talking about right now.
Thank you.
Um, and if, if I'm not mistaken, um, and I was not at the meeting, but I did watch it. I um, I also heard a lot of um consideration for our historic district and that alternate, alternative C actually um, i- in the um evaluation report is describing, it describes how alternative C is actually more protective of the um historic district than any of the other alternatives. And so um, my understanding is that that was a, a driving factor in the selection of alternative C.
Thank you, I'm mute, Mr. Mayor.
So I'd like to add that, you know, the train station is one of the better-used train stations, actually, um, after Palo Alto and I think, you know, uh, Santa Clara and Millbrae, I think it's like the most-used train station. No, maybe that's Hillsdale. Anyway, it is the downtown serving station, and I think it's only a couple blocks away from almost anywhere here, very short walk. Um, and I think that, I do believe that these, these buildings are separated far enough over the tracks, I think, from the historical downtown designated area. Um, I'm wondering, Zach, can we go back to the Planning Commission's recommendation view? I'd like to look at that because I think this is where Mr. Orno's uh property that he was talking about along South Delaware is located also.
E- yes, it's that um, the, the residential low there. And so, is, there's a couple of factors here. The, the parcel specifically is um, is a smaller parcel, kind of a residential, single-family residential-sized parcel. And so, I, even though there might be a density that gets up to fifty, there is a thirty-foot height limit in that area. And so we would look at this area to ensure that the updated land use is aligned with the realistic density that's achievable for lots of this size under this designation, because even if you have a density that might allow up to fifty, for a lot, for those smaller lots of that geometry, realistically, especially with a, a thirty-foot height limit, it seems challenging to reach that type of density. So we would evaluate that to ensure that it is aligned, because as we noted before, um, we don't want to um decrease density or down, or quote-unquote downzone any parcels as part of this process.
Thanks, I would appreciate that. I would just point out that the thirty-foot height limit is a three-story building uh versus the alternative is a two-story building. And there are apartment buildings along that section that have either submerged or half-submerged garages. And um, they've consumed, I mean, they've consolidated, I think, two or three of those lots. And so, I mean, these things are all possible on that block, and it is directly adjacent, like they said, right behind the lumberyard, uh, which is likely at some point can, could end up being uh, uh, some kind of a larger building, because it's, right now, we're showing it here as mixed-use low, so that's one to three stories. So that would fit. See, if that whole thing there were the same mixed-use low on uh the Delaware frontage as well as the Claremont frontage, it would be consistent, and then across the street on the other side of Delaware, there are one- and two-story homes over there. That's what I think, uh, it would be best, I think, to make that whole area there the uh mixed-use low.
So, but, but with the explicit um instruction that there would be no effective downzoning, correct?
Well, I mean, it's R three now, so, yeah.
I believe it's R, R four.
No, I think it's R three is what Mr. Orno's letter said, but, yeah, we don't want to downzone, I don't want to downzone. Let me look up Mr. Orno's letter.
Yeah, my, my records show that it's R four.
Okay.
So you, it could still be R, correct with our moment, could still be R four and be the residential low? Or no, do I not have that right?
R four refers to the number of units that are allowable there, I think.
It could be three stories low and get four units in there.
Well, no, R four is, it's, it's a mixed, uh, it, it's a uh, high-density residential building, R four is. Is that correct, Zach?
I would need to go back and double-check. One of the things to note here, too, is a, a, as, as was noted earlier, a land use can articulate a density range and then the zoning can kind of hone in further, and you can always change a zoning within the density range, but a zoning doesn't always need to allow the maximum density allowed within that general plan land use. So you kind of tier down from it. So even if the land use might allow up to that, your zoning often allows less. But you can always do a rezoning if there's a project that comes forward that's seeking something larger.
Right. Okay, so R four is, is called high-density multifamily housing, so um. So you're saying that that R four side of that street is actually limited to thirty feet in height?
I believe that is the case, that was what we were looking at earlier today.
I guess I, I just don't see, I'm, I'm having trouble seeing how that is um, an important consideration when we're talking about um, a, a block that is in such close proximity to um, to Caltrain. It is clearly within the downtown corridor, and we need to maximize housing opportunities. So, um, I'm just.
My question is, does the residential low preclude the R four? That's all I'm trying to get at, I don't want to downzone anybody, but I just, do I not have it right? That's all, Eric, were you gonna say something on that one?
Uh, I was, I have another question I want to ask, so.
You know, all I care about is I think we should not downzone that, that side of Delaware Street there.
Right, so.
I think it's unfair, I think it's.
Are we doing that when we make it a residential low?
I guess we're not, I guess we're not clear on that right now, so let's just make it general, we don't want to downzone.
Okay, got it.
So, so through the mayor, I have a question, um, back to actually uh scenario C and it looks uh, and, and versus the Planning Commission Recommendation, can, um, what was the, the reasoning behind um changing the residential, I believe it was low to, to medium? We can, uh, no, it was along, let's see, what's your, uh? I'm not sure exactly, it's at the, you can't see my cursor. Um, can you go, can you go to the, um, can you go to the, the scenarios again, please?
Subcommittee.
Yes, uh, so alternative C, um, C right in that, uh, I can't believe I can't know the exact, it's like right around Third Avenue, uh, I, I guess Second Avenue and First. Um, yeah, right, no, to the right, to the right, down, 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 to the right, right, right around there, that, that stretch. So that was, um, so that was the scenario C that uh the majority of the Subcommittee was supported, and then now it looks like we're, we're, we're looking at, um, we're looking at, at increasing that, even though it's, it's very close to a bunch of single-family homes. Um, what was that? Was that just, we need more housing, let's, let's go bigger, or?
I think it's allowing some density downtown, it's between Fourth and Fifth Avenue there.
I think it was specifically taking into account some of the, the approved projects and pipeline projects that, um, that, so just remaining sort of consistent with, with the existing market trends. Um, so, so we're already seeing that level of, of density in improved projects, so just being consistent.
I, I think that gets, again, to, to Councilmember Papin's uh continued concern. Does that area, is it gonna be able to support that type of density when it's, when it's really right next to a bunch of single-family homes? So for just, before someone throws out a motion, I just want to say that I, I'm not, I, I, if we're gonna go with anything, I, I prefer C, not this Planning Commission's recommendation.
Yeah, I think that that was, um, I, I'm a bit concerned as well, because everything that gets in that dense, if you take alternative C, and you're getting very dense with alternative C, then it's gotta lighten up as it gets farther east. And if you look at alternative B, it wasn't quite as dense downtown, but then it, it, it got more volume as it went east, because I think there was that balance where you could, um, it, it was ultimately, you know, like, I don't know what I'm saying, but it seemed like there was a balance with what you were adding. You took a little one here, well, then you gave more here, and alternative C decided to put more in a very condensed area, then it took less as you, as you fanned out and fanned east. So I, I thought that made some sense, actually, um, and I, I'm leaning towards C as well on that one.
I can live with C.
So I will make a motion.
Well, C, you know, if you see the circular line, the circular dotted lines, we're in, you know, it's within a half a mile is all the way down at one oh one. It's very walkable, I mean, that's a ten-minute walk from there to the train station. Um, and I think that's the idea, is we're trying to build some density to get people onto the train. So it pretty much, it respects uh central, it respects north-central, um.
So I, I think C has plenty of density, and it's focusing it in the downtown, but it has, provides a step down to the single-family neighborhoods.
Yeah, most of the density that's showing there is already built. Those colors, the Gateway Commons, the, and the Metropolitan, those things are already all built.
Hmm, can I, can I offer another um area to discuss in, in the downtown, which is the, I, and I, maybe this was a mistake, um, but if we could zoom in to B, um, I, I, it was, if we could zoom in to B on the screen slide, um, uh, actually, the, towards, is it um Fifth Avenue on B? Or at Fifth Avenue on B, um, I think that we've missed some, a real opportunity by changing the, the designation, um, then this way, when I think it should be consistently, B should be consistently mixed-use all the way down that corridor. Um, and I, I'm guessing.
It's up on the other side of the tracks to your left. Zach, yeah, up there, yeah.
So, um, yeah, so I, I mean, I, I think that we, we've talked about a vision of, of B Street as being this, you know, you know, vibrant, amazing place, and, um, and it's already mixed-use. So I, I don't see any justification for a change, making a change and cutting off the, um, the mixed-use development potential in the future, so I, I would just unnote that.
Are you talking about when you get to C?
Can you slide it over to C's, Zach?
Yeah, slide it over a little, so when you get to C, that area that you're referring to becomes high housing instead of mixed-use with all those brown dots right there.
Right, but I think if you look, the Planning Commission's recommendation is different.
You would prefer to have that be mixed-use on that part, right?
Yes.
Okay. I don't.
Yes.
I think I can live with that unless you want, you want to keep more housing and make it all, I can live with it, but, you know, we got housing issues, but I agree with you, Councilmember Lee, on B Street kind of being this, you know, it's got a little bit of the commercial as well as the housing on it. Um, so I, I can live with changing that to mixed-use.
And, and that's again where I could live with that as long as we re, we revisit the, the.
Right.
The overlays that we're talking about to ensure that we get housing there, because it's like, we, we want the ground floor to be vibrant, but we want enough housing, we don't want a couple token affordable units at the top.
Yeah, we're getting housing there now.
That'd be good.
There's a new building coming where the uh, the paint store is, the Cullymore Paints, and it's a uh ground-floor retail or office, and I think three floors or four floors above a residential.
So do we, are, are, can we move on from this one in that we will keep it a C with the change of, on B Street there becoming mixed-use? And it looks like you want to have it highly mixed-use?
Yes.
Okay?
If that's a motion, I will second that.
Okay, great.
Any other discussion? If not, then we'll call for the roll call, Madam Clerk. If not, then we'll call for the roll call, Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Papen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gothols?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, moving on to study area five, this is the Peninsula Avenue area. Um, and this follows the San Mateo Drive corridor, and then you've got um kind of that finger up along the northern boundary um that includes the Safeway. And then we have our three land use alternatives. Here, and then if we'll, we can go to the GPS recommendation. So for study area five, it looks like it was, we had three for alternative three and then three that um included a mix of B and C. And then we can go back to the planning commission recommendation here. And then in in this case, they did. Predominantly good, yeah, they made a number of changes. We can pull up the matrix on their recommendations for this one. So they wanted to look at changing residential medium along Peninsula Woodside Way to mixed use low. There was also a a property owner request on this one for eight oh five Woodside or eight fifty Woodside Way. Asking for mixed use. And then they wanted to change the residential medium along North San Mateo Drive in the San Yanez area and Tilton area to residential high. But they did go with a base of alternative B.
So can I just ask you um? A base of alternative B on Peninsula Avenue?
Yes, that was the planning commission's recommendation, then they added that residential high in the San Yanez-Tilton area.
Was that what the landowner wanted? Was residential high there?
The Woodside Way property owner, I think, do we have that item called out on the following slide? So for this one, um, we, they asked for mixed use. They didn't specify, but they were, uh, and this was, this was a verbal um. Um, request to staff. They were, they basically were looking for office, but then also the ability to build affordable housing above.
So this would be mixed use.
So I I think a mixed use low or a mixed use medium would either would would accommodate this request.
Okay, got it. So then in this instance, they went from the subcommittee was more with C, uh, oh, three of them went with C. And then one went with B and three of them went with B and C. And then planning commission went with B with two changes, right?
That is correct.
I can live with B and the one change. Uh, hold on, hold on, let me, let me make sure I take a look at these scenarios here.
While you're looking at them, do it.
You know, the subcommittee, I'm looking at, we went four of us on C.
No, three of you, go to number five, go to Peninsula Ave.
I'm looking at number five.
Five shows three went with C.
Well.
And then three went with a combination of B and C.
Right. So it's in the notes. What were the reasons for the considerations of B and C?
Through the mayor?
Yes.
I liked B straight off, except um the the top part along um Peninsula. That part of C. I don't know if that was me, but um, but that's, that's what made sense to me.
No, I think you and Cliff both saw it that way. Um, can we go back to the um scenarios? Thank you. So you're talking about, Eric, the top part, the light blue part there?
Yes.
Yeah, and you wanted that to be what?
I want it, I want it B, but but take that light blue.
Oh, I see.
Arm and put it on, put the C part, the the top light blue of C on the B. That's, that's what I personally prefer, but.
Okay, that sounds good.
So big parts, I want to point out the circles there. Big parts of this area on both ends are within a half mile of the train stations, one in San Mateo, one in Burlingame. The one in Burlingame, I don't believe it's a half mile. It's only a few blocks up to the train station from Peninsula there. So I can see what you're saying. You want to change that to um, from residential medium, Eric, to mixed use medium. Is that what you're saying? Oh, and the actual shopping center would go from mixed use high down to mixed use medium?
Yes.
I mean, I think um, I think that the area that um, that darker blue area on B makes a lot of sense in terms of it's um, it's. Potential and proximity to so many neighbors. So having that remain um. Mixed use medium. I think is an 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 advantage in terms of maximizing the um, the space and having it be very consistent with the surrounding area.
It's mixed use high in B ammo.
Yeah, and I I think that that's the right thing. So I mean, I I think the light blue um on the arm um. Is isn't it, you know, is is a good suggestion, but uh keeping the dark blue on the old dongle.
Okay.
So wait, that's not the, that's the medium blue, you're saying, right?
Sorry, the medium.
You know, I want to say, they already have some businesses along that stretch there and they're pretty quiet. I think that uh some uh where the Sam Car Office is, the businesses that front on Peninsula Avenue there are very quiet.
Well, the the mixed use, I mean, I could live with the medium blue if the rest of that was light, the rest of the arm was light blue, I think. I I just think that to have enough flexibility there is kind of important. And it's Peninsula Ave.
I like that idea. So light blue on the top, medium blue on the head.
Okay, I like that. And I like the request of the owner for the Woodside Way. And then the final thing was, I don't understand it, that that the. Uh, planning commission said change the residential medium along North San Mateo Drive between East Santa Yanez and Tilton to residential high. Let's take, show me where that is. So they wanted to make that residential high instead of light purple?
Here we can move to their recommendation. See, it was between San Yanez and Tilton that they wanted the residential high.
It's a, that's already a pretty dense uh apartment neighborhood there.
I agree. That's a little tight.
No, I'm saying it would shit right in.
You think? Really high?
So, yeah. It's an apartment neighborhood, right?
It is, it's consistent.
Right, and it and it's like I say, once again, very walkable to the train station.
Okay, I can live with that. So this looks like what you had. You had the the up at the hammer there, and then you have the.
Yeah, that looks like it there.
Yeah.
Which.
And then the Woodside Way. So those are, does that, would that planning commission want to have the things we want and nothing else? No, because they, they took away some stuff. On Talpa? Well, I think what we can do is we should make a C, where it's light purple, we'll make that brown, right? And then if we go up to that hammer, we're making the tip of the hammer uh.
Darker blue.
Yeah, the darker blue, the medium. And then we have light blue on the on the handle. And then we're done, right?
So we're we're starting with B and then we're making those three changes? Is that what you're saying?
Excuse me, yes, we're starting with B. Sorry, I was looking at something else.
Yeah, if that's a motion, I'll I'll second that.
Okay, yeah. Wait, can we restate exactly what that is that? Zach, what's your understanding of that motion?
So it, the I actually sounds like the planning commission recommendation with how you described it because they they.
It does look that way, yeah.
So I think what you're describing is this configuration. Am I correct? Or is there something here that's you're looking for that's different?
I think that's what I just heard.
That's what I heard as well.
I just don't know where it stops. I I want to make sure that we.
There's a black line on the bottom at the end of the brown there. There's a black line, that's it.
Stopping?
Yeah.
Because when I look at, oh, never mind, it was B, never mind, I kept looking at C, I apologize. Okay, all righty.
So we have a motion to approve that and a second?
Second. Or motion, whichever one you need.
Okay, I'll make the motion, you make the second.
Okay, I second.
There already was a motion and second on the floor, I think.
Were were they for this option?
No, I think, I think it changed. So the prior, I'm gonna, prior motion withdrawn.
Withdraw, and then it is that it would be as the planning commission uh option reflects. So we have a motion by the mayor and a second. By Councilmember Lee to adopt the planning mission recommendation for this number five Peninsula Avenue.
And thank you for withdrawing your motion. That's it, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gothols?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Papen?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Hey, um, can we um take a uh personal minute break here for like five minutes?
Might have to dock your pay, but okay.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Seven down, five to go.
There we go. I got a feeling we're on the downhill slope now.
Mister Mayor is looking for Prasanna. Um, just a reminder that under your council guidelines, you're supposed to pause for a vote at eleven to make sure you want to proceed.
We'll do that, thank you.
Thank you.
Should we wait for the city attorney before we do that?
I think he's just concerned that we do it.
Oh, okay. Is he with us now?
Is Cameron and microphone are muted right now.
Hold on a second. Prasanna, are you with us?
Uh, yes, I'm right here.
Okay, good. So we're gonna start proceeding. I want to ask the council what their pleasure is. It's after eleven P M. Should we continue? Do we need to get a a vote or can we just show thumbs up? Prasanna, how do you think we can proceed with this?
Yeah, so under council procedures, you can do a majority vote or just proceed by consensus, whether to continue with an item and also. Um, on the issue of taking up the remaining items. Um, so either way is is just fine.
Okay, so in terms of the remaining items, um, we don't have what we have left. We have uh the uh comprehensive fee schedule and we have the uh military equipment policy. So council, what's the pleasure? Do you want to finish this item and then save the others for later?
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, just on the, oh, I see the city manager is about to, is going to chime in, let your.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, both of those items are are time sensitive. Um, we would have otherwise not put them on tonight's agenda given um. The the general plan update item, but both the fee schedule and the military equipment policy items should. um, the, the general plan update item, but both the fee schedule and the military equipment policy items should be very brief items. But they were time sensitive.
Thank you, okay, so do we have a motion to continue?
I approve. And I'll second.
Okay, both moved and seconded, Madam Clerk, let's vote.
I apologize, I didn't get the motion in second.
We're gonna finish everything.
No, no.
May I add motion?
Thank you.
And Joe seconded, was that you, Joe?
Yes, I, I agreed with the deputy mayor.
Okay.
Gothels moved, Pappan second.
Okay, Councilmember Gothels?
Yes.
Council, uh, Deputy Mayor Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember, uh, Lee?
Yes.
And Mayor Bonilla?
Yes, thank you.
Motion to continue with all items, carried five zero.
Thank you very much, so now we're on item six, study area six.
Yes, the, um, study area six, the campus drive area, this site, yeah, should be pretty straightforward, includes the Laurelwood Shopping Center and then the campus drive area, um, in the area adjacent to, um, College San Mateo. Um, we have three land use alternatives, there, all of these parcels are rather large, include, uh, um, the office campus up there, and we do have a couple of pipeline projects and housing sites here as well. And then we have the general plan subcommittee recommendation, um, in this case, they, they were relatively split. We had a, um, one Alt A, two Alt B, and four Alt C, so the majority was with alternative C. And then the Planning Commission, they, um, they recommended for this alternative B, and then they all, um, with one change, which was to change the twenty-six-hundred campus drive site from a residential low to a residential medium.
Is that the one that people spoke on tonight, or no?
No.
The, so this, the, the request, the land use request is actually adjacent, it's just off the map, it's on the other, it's on Hillsdale Boulevard on the other side of Highway two, State Route ninety-two, um, so it is actually outside the study area.
Okay.
Do you mind going back to the, um, the, the side by sides? Yeah. You know, I have to say, I, I, I think that the general plan subcommittee got this one right by eliminating the, um, the office park, um, and turning it into residential, um, under alternative C. So the majority of the planning, of the subcommittee members supported alternative C, and, um, and that was, that was my, my preference as well.
I think that the offices voted with their feet, they're mostly gone.
Right, and which, which I think is, is all the more reason to convert it into residential. Uh, we know that, uh, office, it creates more, um, more trips and traffic than residential and, um, and it's not performing well, so I, the council in the past has strongly supported conversions of off, underutilized office to residential, and I think that's the right thing to do in this case.
Can we look at the Planning Commission Recommendation again, please?
So the, so the Planning Commission actually kept the office. So I, I would, I, the GPU, um, subcommittee.
Yes.
Favored eliminating it.
Right, so that particular office is the only one that seems to stay occupied up there. It's the one right at the top of the hill.
Through, through the mayor, I'd just say I was one of the people that, um, supported C, and I think that's the best path forward here too as well.
Yeah, I did support C also, and.
Is there a motion?
A move that we support map C.
Second. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gothels?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pappan?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero for C.
All right, uh, we're at study area seven, this is the North Shoreview and Shoreview area. Um, this, you've got a finger at the south end, that includes Fiesta Market and then San Mateo DMV, uh, more at the north end of the corridor, this is kind of straddles both sides of Highway one oh one here. And then moving to the alternatives, um, we do have a mix depending with, um, A, B, or C, um, recognizing that we do have some service commercial in this area along this corridor. And then we have our general plan subcommittee recommendation, um, which in this case was, um, was aligning mainly with a mix, it's, um, I forget, I know there was a lot of mixing and matching along here. So I, I'd have to go back and look at my notes, I don't recall specifically where they were aligning, but I think it was truly a mix where there was, there wasn't a clear preference on any of the alternatives. And then looking at the Planning Commission Recommendation, um, they went with alternative A and then made some changes to the commercial service, um, south, south of Third Avenue, moving it to mixed use, and then similarly moving the mixed use low to mixed use high, south of, south of Third Avenue.
And that's because they're trying to get these sensitive receptors away from the freeway. Is what I'm reading, and I, I think I agree with that.
So, um, can, yeah, I have in my notes, uh, a big mashup too, that everybody was, at least in the general plan subcommittee. I personally, that, I, I, I'm not supportive of the, the mixed use high and C at the bottom right, um, I, I think that that should be medium, just, it's, it's near all those, um, homes. So that's, that's my take on it.
So I was looking at C with no housing along one oh one, and I wanted to go with the, I believe it was the commercial service, one of the three stories, the pink.
That would be alternative A.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah, um. And what about the other side of one oh one, though, what is all of that? There's apartments, there's, uh, the Kingston, uh, commercial area there along there, with, with, yeah. And let's see, mixed use high, so that's the Chavez Market over there, I think, where the, where the blue is on the end. It's a shopping center there in Shoreview.
Um, I think that's a, that's a great site, and I, I liked alternative A with just that small change of, um, adopting a, a mixed use high on, um, the Chavez Markets site.
A with mixed use high on the Chavez, which is the dark blue, right?
Yes.
And what about the east or, or the north side on this map, side of one oh one? Um, I think we're looking at some, uh, residential uses along there, and I think that if you look at the Planning Commission's take, they were with A, but they wanted to, uh, change the area's own commercial service and mixed use slow, whatever, blah, 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 wanted to follow the California Airport Recommendation regarding setting homes and daycares within five hundred feet of a roadway, so, um, that's the question. Are we gonna be careful with the sensitive receptors here, the young people, uh, at the, uh, the side of one oh one there?
Can I, can I see the Planning Commission one again real fast? What did they do with that Chavez Market? So they made it high.
Yeah.
When you go back to A, A is what? It's medium, right?
Yeah.
And is it?
A is low.
Low.
Oh, low.
Low, it's low.
And are there single-family homes around there, what's the story there? I think.
Right.
There, there are single-family homes behind it on Patricia Avenue there.
Right, and, but right opposite it is, um, is, uh.
Four-story apartment building.
Right.
That's why I think it should be medium.
So it would be, you.
A with mixed use medium there, Eric, that's what you're saying?
I, I could go for that.
Okay.
And, and that, and the argument, like, really close to caltering, doesn't really work there either, I mean.
No, no, not at all, no.
And you guys are okay with mixed use, oh, oh, no, it, or excuse me, it would still be that light commercial, that pink will stay the same, right?
In A, yes.
Okay, and, and right next to the Chavez one is where I'm talking about, all right, so we're gonna do medium, uh, mixed use, where the.
It's not commercial there already next to Chavez.
Okay, yes, it is, I know, I just didn't know if you wanted to change, so we'll take A with the medium mixed use of Chavez? Is that a, something we can all agree on?
Yeah.
From there.
Okay. Let's do it, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gothels?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yep.
Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Zach, can I ask a question about six?
Yes.
Did we address the staff's recommendation regarding, uh, regarding the uh, the property owner's request during public comment?
I was just gonna, gonna highlight that, since it's, it's a near six but outside of, it wasn't specifically addressed, so I wanted to, um, ask if council wanted to weigh in on that request.
Even though it's not part of it, is, I, I asked about it.
Where exactly, what's that, Zach, is it up at the GoPro side up there in Clearview, or where is?
It is, let me pull up the, um, we can pull up the table with the property owner requests here, um. Yeah, cause it, it doesn't, you can't actually see it on the map here, cause it's on the other side of, of State Route ninety-two. So it's, yeah, it's the Parkview, um, Terrace Apartments, fifteen oh one, fifteen fifty-five Hillview Boulevard. There's existing apartments there, and their request is for residential medium. They don't want to, um, redevelop the apartments, but they have area with the tennis courts below it that they're looking for, and they would, they're asking for that increased density to allow for development potential on that part of the site. And so it's outside a study area, so there's definitely options for changing land use outside the study areas. I think we would recommend that they stay within the development limits as currently established, just because we identified the ten study areas as the areas where more significant change would occur, but at the end of the day, it's, it's council's prerogative as to how you want to respond to these requests.
I, I was fine with that request, it made sense to me, uh, when it was brought up, and I believe staff agree with their recommendation. So, I, I'll make the motion then, as to this specific request at that property that we, uh, zone it residential medium in case they bring us back a proposal in the future.
I'll second it. I don't, I'm worried about setting precedent, but I, I'll second it because I, I think it would be a better, oh, here, here comes our city attorney. It is a better use of the land, but, uh.
So, is, is this particular site, it's, it's not within any of the study areas that staff has sought input from the council on this evening, it's in a completely separate area, do I understand that correctly?
Yes, it is, it looks like it's surrounded by open space, uh, west of Hillsdale Boulevard and near Twitter View Way.
Yeah, right, the, the concern there is whether this particular agenda item sort of has addressed, you know, encompasses this specific property, if it's not within a study area, cause the agenda, the agenda item references different alternatives to the ten study areas and then circulation alternatives.
Right.
Zach, wasn't this discussed at the Planning Commission?
It was referenced, one option, if, if it's okay with the city attorney, would be to entertain it, and then when we bring back the land use map for confirmation in July, we could, um, we could note that this is the land use map for the entire city, um, so that we could reflect this request, which is outside study area six, so maybe you're, you're open, you're basically directing staff to be open to bringing, bringing this change back, when we bring back the, the final land use map for your confirmation.
I think that would be fine, I, I think just, uh, I would advise just avoiding a formal motion at this point, and then you, you know, you, I think if, there's been a sort of general direction, uh, indication from council, now we just leave it at that and then proceed as Zach, uh, indicated, just to stay within the boundaries of what you've agendized. Sorry for the tangent, I, I, I knew this was gonna come up later if we didn't bring it up now, so I'm glad we addressed it.
So you're gonna withdraw the motion, right?
Yeah, we're not voting on it, but I think we're directing staff, and so the direction is clear.
So the vote, the motion is withdrawn. Is that correct? Yes?
Yes, uh, pursuant to advice of our city attorney, I'll withdraw the motion, but we are directing staff to, to bring it back as Zach described.
Thank you very much, moving on to study area seven.
We should be at study area eight, um, we, um, for study area eight, which is the Parkside Plaza area, um, this is, these are the parcels, um, on the four corners of the Highway ninety-two and one oh one interchange. Um, this includes, um, the San Mateo Marriott, um, this also includes the, um, the office park where we had a specific land use request. Um, it also includes Parkside Plaza, and then on the other side, um, the Fish Market Site, we did have another request there, um. And so we have three land use alternatives in this area, um, you can see there are also a number of, um, adequate sites on our housing element sites inventory included here. And then starting with the, the GPS recommendation. See here, so, um, for this one, it was a split between alternatives A and C. And then looking at the Planning Commission Recommendation, um, for this one, they did go with alternative B, and then they, they did recommend, then, for this one, we did want to note the, um, the, the PS Business Park Request originally came in as a residential, um, or they requested that it be a mixed use medium, and then, um, and that was the request that went to the GPS and then to the Planning Commission, and then ultimately, the Planning Commission recommended a mixed use high, and then their most recent request did, um, request this mixed use high as the designation. So we just wanted to note, there have been a couple of different letters on the record, the first two requested the mixed use medium, and then the most recent requested mixed use high, and that was what the Planning Commission recommended. Um, the other one here was, um, changing the nineteen-hundred South Norfolk site from mixed use medium to commercial service. We do want to note, we do have a property owner request on this one, um, they are requesting that it stay, I believe this is a mixed use medium, is what they are seeking at this site here. So this, yeah, this site does have four different requests, so for this nineteen-hundred Norfolk site, the PC recommendation was this service commercial, but the property owner is requesting the mixed use medium. And then we do have either a residential medium or a mixed use medium request for the Fish Market Site. Um, the Crossroads Property, they didn't request a specific land use, they just asked for research and development to be a permitted use as part of office high, and then we have the PS Business Park Request that I just made.
Can you go back to the truck showing what the requested uses were there, for a second, Zach?
The property owner requests?
Yes. So, the Seagate is currently the office park there at nineteen-hundred South Norfolk, next to ninety-two, right?
Yes, at that ninety-two one oh one.
On the north side of the creek there. Yeah, there, right, yeah, that's the PGNE substation, and then there's the office development, right, okay. And what are they requesting for there?
Mixed use medium.
Okay. And.
The Fish Market Site, how many? The Fish Market Site, how many, how many units would that designation allow?
I believe this site is around. Three acres, the total site, cuz the Fish Market, it actually is a long strip that goes all the way to ninety two.
To Bridgepoint. It's it's Bridgepoint. The street is Bridgepoint Parkway or Fashion Island Parkway, whatever it is there.
I believe the owner, yeah, I would need to double check that exact.
It goes, it goes from the Marina Library down to uh. The street that goes underneath the ninety two at the Foster City.
So when? One of the biggest differences then is on B where uh, that's that. Across from the Fish Market, there's a skinny strip that's blue in all of the maps. And then across from that, the difference is one makes it housing, that's kind of, that's retail right now, right?
The shopping center?
Yeah.
Yes, that is.
So in scenario B, that is housing and A and C is mixed use. And the planning commission went with B, but the subcommittee was torn between A and C. But let's just start there with the shopping center. What what do you wanna see there?
Yeah, but we weren't concerned with. The deleterious effects of the air and rubber and everything else kind of pollution. Coming from one oh one and ninety two onto the residential uses very nearby. So that's the consideration the planning commission came up with that made a difference.
And so that's why they made it all housing there and then. Okay.
Move the housing over to Grant. Uh, and while there's the hotel and then there's the uh. Uh, on the uh, what is the currently the office site there, the the dark blue? That is proposed uh. By the owner's own description, offices along one oh one with residential stepping down to the residential along Grant. So right, right now it's shown as mixed use high, so the offices. Would be the high part and stepping down to nineteenth Avenue part. With residential.
That that whole lot? Is divided that way?
Yeah.
And at at the north of it too, step down?
Yes. Well, wait a minute, there's a creek there, okay? There's an actually pretty good sized space there, that that's the sixteenth Avenue Channel. So I'm not sure about the step down there.
So that's mixed use high there?
So that, I mean, that's gonna be like, it could be up to twelve stories, right? Right there, that just seems pretty high to me. Nowhere near transit.
It it it, yeah, I guess it could be, so um. They did, they did express interest in stepping down to residential, so. If you're looking at their letter, I think that's what they said.
Can we, can we go back to the other scenarios?
So in B Zach, what is that designation there on the uh? Along Amphlet and between Amphlet and Grant there?
On B, that would be residential medium.
Uh huh. So that's kind of a waste of that site. And it also puts residences right up against one oh one. So that's why the mixed use designation is better because it blocks sound and it blocks sub pollution. And uh, then it allows residences along the Grant Street side. The whole, the whole area there is probably six hundred feet from Grant to Amphlet. So it's a pretty good sized area.
So my feeling is this, on that site. I would like, I can make it mixed use, but how do we get the step down that we'd like to see? That's that's number one. Now, let me, let me just go through and then you can pick them apart. I'm okay with that shopping center being housing, but. It might be just as good to make it mixed use, the former shopping center. And then when we get down across from Fashion Island Boulevard or the south of it. I would keep that mixed use and not residential. So I'm kinda feeling like mixed use, mixed use. And then mixed use, but you gotta get that step down on the uh, Amphlet stuff.
So you would support high mixed use there or medium mixed use?
I I would support high if I got the step down. How do you guarantee that?
It's a, it's a very large parcel, um, and and I think that it.
Let me look up, let me look up the guy's letter.
It could be designed in in a way that had the offices flanking the um, the one oh one. Um, you know, with the right community benefit negotiation could include, you know, maybe a a public. Access to uh, you know, a parklet that would be great to have more green space there. I think there's a lot of potential um, for a community benefit in a project like that.
I I don't dispute that, sorry, I don't dispute that, just wanna make sure we get the step down. Um, and then. And and it seemed like they were willing to do it, you just gotta figure out what the process is to make that happen. But we, yeah, we got a lot of tools at our fingertips, I don't dispute that. Um, how do you all feel about the other with the mixed use at that shopping center? As opposed to all residential?
No, I think that's okay.
Um, I like the, I mean, I could live with mixed use, I, what was proposed was the um, was the regional, is it? Is it, am I reading this right? Regional um, commercial and? Is that right?
That would be service commercial.
Sorry, service commercial and I think um. I think concentrating service commercial um, in that location, which is really, has a really great. Um, freeway access is um. Is a really good idea and especially cuz we've shifted some other service commercial around um.
Well, no, I wasn't, I wouldn't change that, that's all good.
Yeah, service commercial is the office building south of ninety two. North is residential medium, isn't that residential medium there? Um, where your dot is, yeah.
Yeah, that's residential medium there.
Yeah, it's currently a shopping center and I think they're proposing to build on three point two acres at the Fish Market. Uh, like a hundred and fifty or a hundred and sixty units.
Yeah, so I was saying that where that that commercial, where that shopping center is. Could be mixed use.
Yeah, I think the owner of that shopping center, when he sees all those new shoppers, might improve it.
Yeah, and then the other thing though is where you where you were just talking about though with that commercial service. I would, I would go mixed use there, the 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 pink just to the east of it is okay. But that that's a pretty good parcel there. Um, I'm not sure I would leave that just commercial service.
That site hasn't a property owner request for mixed use and as as noted, that is a housing element um, opportunity site. Or um, adequate site on our housing sites list. So if it stayed as service commercial, we would need to revise our housing element sites to remove that site.
So the Airborne guidelines say we shouldn't do that, but.
Yeah.
Because of the freeway pollution, so.
Well, what if we did the whole buffer thing and then we put the housing more towards the inside? I don't know.
Well, yeah, I guess, you know, that that could be that there is uh. What, mixed use uh, um, commercial around the outside and residential on the inside?
Yeah, my my feeling is go back to like scenario, say A. Or B or C, yeah, those, and I'm looking at that quadrant. And I would keep it, you know, mixed use medium. And then the pink, I'm I'm on A right now is where I'm looking.
Yeah, right.
Pink and then the Fashion Island where that shopping center is, keep that mixed use. And then over on the Concar Amphlet thing. Um, we could do the hide, but the, you'd have to have, you know, the office. With the idea that the office runs along the freeway and then you step it down to the neighborhood and the. Um, residential stuff is the west side of that lot.
Zach, is there some way we can split the zoning on that side or just somehow convey that that's what we're, we're, you know, seeking to designate?
What might be the most effective way here is to pick the mixed use designation that you're interested in, whether it's medium or high and then. We would be able to then draft some um, land use policies. That focus on how that mixed use might be distributed around that site. Because we also do identify it as an opportunity for some some privately owned public open space because of the size of the parcel, so. I think there's ways to, there's, I think it's over fourteen acres, so there's a, there's opportunities to. Plan it more specifically, even if you just have that broad mixed use designation.
Right, so. Then we can do that.
I agree, I think mixed use high is a great use in that, in that context. And I like what um, Deputy Mayor Pappan was saying with just providing a lot more flexibility um, with the mixed use and the other parcels.
I guess we are kinda looking at A with that one change then to the Concar stuff, right?
Yep, I could support that.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Yeah. So we'll support, well, the motion is for A with the change to Amphlet. Uh, that area which will be um, mixed use high. Uh, but as Zach had said, in the future, we'll we'll try to do our trade offs there.
So now wait a minute though, the Fish Market in A, is that mixed use medium or mixed use high over there?
That's mixed use medium.
Yeah, I think that should be mixed use high over there too. Um, mixed use medium.
I, so.
Oh, no, you know what? Mixed use medium is fine there. Yeah.
One, I don't think the property owner's asking for it and two. Um, I'm not sure the soils could support more than mixed use medium anyway.
That, I I think you're right, Joe.
Okay, so the motion stands? Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Pappan?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gothols?
Yes.
And Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, moving on to study area nine. This is the Hillsdale Norfolk area, Hillsdale Boulevard where it crosses over Highway one oh one. Um, you have the Hillsdale insight on the west side of one oh one and then the Marina Plaza Shopping Center on the east side. Um, we've got our three land use alternatives. Um, that that kind of flag finger site, that is, I believe, the Hampton Inn and Suites. So that's why that is a constant land use in all three. Um, we also do have a property owner request, we, there is a pipeline project there, so we had um, designated that as. As residential medium, but the Hillsdale, even though, because that is an existing application, but they have requested. Um, I believe, I believe it's a mixed or a residential. Medium is what they are requesting, so that is consistent with the designation in all three land uses. And then the general plan subcommittee on this one. They. So on on, for study area nine, it was primarily alternative C with um, two for B and then one who had a mix between B and C. And then looking at the planning commission recommendation, they just went with alternative C and no modifications. And that's how how that land use plays out consistent with what the planning commission recommended.
I mean, I think this one's still pretty straightforward with the subcommittee majority supporting C. The planning commission supporting C with no modifications. And accommodating the request of the um, property owner.
I second that motion.
Third, roll call please.
Okay, Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gothols?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pappan?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, thank you.
All right, our final study area, study area ten, Bridgepoint, and this one is. Actually pretty straightforward and the reason being here is is because of the existing conditions plus. The the housing sites inventory which identify a certain number of housing production here and so. Um, based on those numbers, we really have three. Three alternatives that are functionally the same, we had some slightly different jobs numbers, but that just is mainly. I anticipating a different level of intensity within these same land uses, so. Um, really, it's looking at these three, the general plan subcommittee, I don't believe they had um. A lot of input on this one, I think they, yeah, they, because they recognized all three were the same. And then I, the planning commission, um, their main comment was to keep residential units away from um, that ninety two adjacency.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Um, uh, one uh, topic that came up that I thought was a a good one in the general plan subcommittee was. Um, bringing up the fact that there's no um, open space um, kind of. Or 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 parks um, kind of planned for this space. Um, can you talk a little bit more about? How we can um, you know, try to? Try to get this side of this area a little bit of more open space or or areas for kids to play and stuff like that?
This, yeah, there, you can see the the circular P, you've got the Bridgepoint Shopping Center and there's a lot of parking there and given the size of the site. This definitely seemed like an opportunity and and for this area, open space is definitely something that would benefit the larger neighborhoods. So I I think that would be, that could be initially reflected. As mapped and then we could kind of build on that with policies and actions focused on this area. Would be be my suggestion if you wanted to highlight that and then we could look at our other elements as ways to support this area or that, that objective here.
That would be my preference.
What was it that you were asking for? Sorry, I didn't.
Well, it's basically this, but. Making the the observation that um, that if we can try to get open space somewhere in here. Um, while we're allowing. Um, you know, pretty, pretty dense uh, development to happen. Um, would be ideal if we can.
I think that's what we've been doing, uh, Zach, isn't that right? I mean. Most of the larger proposals, we we do call for some open space. Since we lack enough open space already.
Yeah, we have identified them on the land use map and I think based on on the input that we're hearing tonight. We can definitely craft goals and policies that support that objective as well. And find ways that we can roll them in or appropriate opportunity sites where we can make that an aspect of the project.
Especially when you get them where, you know, we just talked about a fourteen acre site. And that's, you know, that that lends itself to some open space, as does this one, that's a great point.
Yeah, and actually, the the owner, uh, the SP Properties at the fourteen acre site. Are talking about providing open space to in their letter, which I can't find for some reason.
That's okay, but this one is equally, this is a very large one, so I I agree, we gotta. Provide.
Yeah, and I appreciate um, Councilmember Rodriguez elevating this this specific um, opportunity and and I think. If we, when we circle back, I hope when we circle back and talk about, you know, our goals and policies. That we're talking about, you know, sort of um, pegging some of the larger lots for redevelopment with. With the um, with a goal of creating the publicly, publicly accessible private space. But also potentially getting, you know, some rec centers built with with uh, swimming pools, I mean, there's. There's a lot of um, ideas on the table that we and asks, potential asks we could make of um, future developers.
True.
So are are you satisfied that we can approve this map in its current edition? Okay, then I'll move that we uh, adopt this scenario.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Pappan?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gothols?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Turn eight even midnight.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now that. Okay, so now then, we're off. Does that complete this item, Zach? We're done?
Yes, that gives us the input we're looking for, so we'll be folding this into a preferred land use scenario and preferred circulation scenario and preferred land use scenario. We'll be coming back to council in July for confirmation.
Mr. Zach, Donald, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, we're off to a public hearing on item seventeen, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three comprehensive fee schedule.
Right. Good evening, Mayor Benia, members of the city council, my name is Carly Toffee, I'm the senior management analyst with the finance department. Are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm going to give an abbreviated version in the interest of time. But the item I have before you is the public hearing for the annual revisions to the comprehensive fee schedule. Fees are typically increased by the Bay Area CPI or Consumer Price Index, which was three point eight percent this year. Um, I've highlighted new fees, fees increase in excess of CPI and reduce fees for your review. Um, I believe you had those in your materials as well. These other changes include. Um, Public Works curb painting was split into two categories, review and inspection as a result of their matrix fee study. Um, I also wanted to mention that the community development department underwent a fee study with Matrix Consulting Group earlier this year. Um, those revisions were brought to you and those, the proposed fee schedule tonight reflects those changes. And with that, I'm happy to field any questions, I want to thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, questions?
I'm willing to make a motion to adopt the revised fee schedule.
Second that motion.
I would recommend taking public comment first.
Yes.
To those four attendees.
He's a hardcore. Where they just left their computer on.
Just lost two. Mr. Mayor, are you calling for public comment?
Yes, can we have public comment, please? Thank you.
Please raise your hand if you'd like to give comment on this item. Mr. Mayor, I have no hands raised.
Closing the public comment period.
Wake up.
Oh, you can hear me, closing the public comment period.
So I'll move that we adopt the revised fee schedule?
Second.
Roll call both, please.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Pappen?
Yes.
Councilmember Gothols?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much, and now on to, uh, ordinance introduction, military equipment policy.
Oh, there I am, sorry, good evening, uh, can you hear me there?
Yeah, we got you, Dave.
Good evening and almost good morning, uh, Lieutenant Riccardi and myself are here tonight to, uh, discuss the military equipment policy ordinance for introduction. I will go ahead and share my screen with you, where I will also have an abbreviated version for you guys in the interest of time. So to give you a little bit of background on this, uh, on September thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty-one, AB forty-one was signed into law. Requiring law enforcement agencies to adopt the military equipment policy. Uh, this policy must be approved by ordinance prior to the funding, acquisition, or use of equipment. Uh, the policy, um, SMPD is not seeking any new equipment. We're requesting the introduction of an ordinance to approve policy. And the policy just allows for the continued use of existing equipment. Uh, much of which was acquired a long time ago, it's been used, utilized for many years, and we've had, uh, no issues with, uh, thus far. And it should be noted that this is an equipment that we use on a daily basis. Uh, San Mateo PD does not possess any tactical equipment obtained from the military. AB four eighty-one's definition of military equipment is not what traditionally comes to mind. We don't have any rocket launchers, tanks, grenades, nothing of that sort or any other military surplus, uh, supplies. Items deemed, uh, military equipment by AB forty-one are deployed specifically to reduce the risk to the community. And are a component of the best practices of law enforcement agencies across the country. The equipment provides officers the ability to safely resolve volatile situations. And the proposed policy defines purposes of equipment, authorized uses, legal procedural rules. And training required to staff prior to using the equipment. The, the policy before you tonight includes components required by government code. Such as description of the equipment, capabilities, manufacturer, uh, purposes and authorized uses, cost of obtaining and maintaining. Legal and procedural rules governing its use. Training required to use the equipment and mechanisms to place, in place to ensure, uh, compliance. Uh, I'm just going to go through and list the equipment that San Mateo PD has, we have an armored rescue vehicle. Breaching tools, chemical agents, a launching cup. Long range acoustic device, also known as the LRAD rifles. Uh, unmanned aircraft system, the UAS with the drone, uh, and ground system robots, command and control vehicle. Distraction devices, the forty millimeter less lethal projectile launchers and rounds. Uh, it should be noted that San Mateo PD is part of a regional tactical team. Uh, it's made up of seven cities, we're the largest, uh, city, and we house the equipment here that other agencies rely on as part of that regional team. Uh, the, the components of the policy, um, are designed to promote transparency and accountability. Uh, for example, future acquisition of military equipment requires a public meeting, policy update, and council approval. The department is responsible for preparing an annual military equipment report. Needs to be posted on the city website, shared with the public via a notice meeting, delivered annually to council to confirm compliance. The draft policy was posted on the city website on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, which met the requirement of at least thirty days prior to the meeting. Uh, the action requested here tonight is to introduce the ordinance to approve the military, military equipment policy. That the policy reflects input and feedback from the city attorney. It ensures compliance with the law. The ordinance makes determinations required by government codes such as. The equipment is necessary because there is no reasonable alternative that can achieve the same level of officer civilian safety. The policy will safeguard the public welfare, safety, civil rights, and civil liberties. Should the council introduce this ordinance, it will be considered for adoption, May second, twenty twenty-two. That concludes our PowerPoint, and I don't open up for any questions.
Any questions, council members? Hello, are we all here? Okay, no questions, we're going to go for public comment. Madam Clerk, public comment?
Thank you, if anyone would like to comment on this item, please raise your hand. Mr. Mayor, I have no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Close public comment, back to the council, comments, final comments? Motion?
I move that we adopt the, uh, procedures, is that what we're adopting? The ordinance, oh, so we're.
You're introducing an order.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second, Madam Clerk, could we have the roll call, please?
Deputy Mayor Pappen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gothols?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Can I, I mean, this is after the fact, but I didn't get, jump in earlier enough, um, early enough. And so, um, I just wanted to thank, um, thank the PD for the, um, the in-depth. Uh, orientation for all department heads, it was, um, very well done and exceptionally organized and. Um, and getting to, uh, getting to know some of the, um, the folks on the team, but also getting to, um. Look at, get inside tour, some of, um, the, the tools and equipment and vehicles that we have. Um, and seeing, uh, for me, it was one of the takeaways was seeing the nexus between the, our, um, emergency. Um, prepared operations, uh, and, um, and our, our public safety. Well, through PD, and so I just, um, that was a really important. Lesson that I came away with in understanding how, how important some of, um, these vehicles are to, to the work. Um, for PD, but also in the case of a natural disaster. Um, so I just wanted to say that, sorry, a little late and a little tired, but. Got it out. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, it was our pleasure, and thank you for coming.
Thank you. Okay, so, uh, have we had the vote here? We have a motion and a second, correct? So the vote.
Add the vote.
That's how we voted. We already voted.
Okay, then I'm half asleep. I think we are now off to, um. Reports and announcements, do we have any, uh, reports or announcements? Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Lee.
Um, so I received an email that gave me a glimmer of hope. Um, about a lawsuit that, um, San Francisco and LA are pursuing. Um, it, as a means to defend, um, some of these businesses that have been targeted by ADA lawsuits. And, um, and I, I think, um, this is a, this is a crippling. And chilling effect on our small businesses, and it's really hard to, um. It's really hard to fix the law, um, as it's, uh, it, as I learn more about it, I think that it, it's going to require federal. Um, like a federal overhaul and, and is not even something that we can really address at the state level very. Easily or effectively, so this lawsuit, um, gave me sort of a glimmer of hope. And I, I wanted to ask, um, our city attorney. To, uh, l, take a look at, um, what, what the. What the law, like basically take a look at it, what, what's happening, um, and, and get a sense of whether they. Our, our county DA has, um, has considered joining the lawsuit. Um, I understand, based on some preliminary conversations, that the city of San Mateo is ineligible to join the lawsuit. Because of the size of our city and that we don't meet the other criteria that's, um, required. Under the Business and Professions Code seventeen two hundred. Um, so, um, so I understand that we, as a city, are restricted in, um, in joining lawsuit, however. If there's, um, interest and support and opportunity for us to be part of a wave of supporting the county. To join that lawsuit and the DA's office, and I think that, um, that's certainly of interest to me, so I, I'm hoping that we can agendize this and. Um, and there's support to kind of learn more and dig into it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so what, uh, San Francisco and, uh, Los Angeles District Attorney did was to file. As Councilmember Lee mentioned, uh, unfair competition law lawsuit under Business and Professions Code seventeen two hundred. Um, the entities that are eligible to file those types of lawsuits are. It's basically the district attorney, could be the attorney general, and certain city attorneys of, uh, that, uh. Meet certain criteria under state law, like typically part of the city, county, or certain larger cities, which we wouldn't qualify for. Um, so, uh, one question I had is whether, Councilmember Lee, are you asking for? Uh, uh, me to informally speak to the district attorney's office for San Mateo, or. You mentioned agendizing, something on a future agenda, and I just, I want to be, uh. Kind of mindful of the independent prosecutorial discretion that the district attorney has as well. And something else to consider is, if you wanted to pursue a letter, is perhaps. You could support the existing lawsuit that's already been filed. By San Francisco and, uh, Los Angeles, but their district attorney's offices. Um, that's an alternative approach for a future agenda, if you want to agendize something.
I'm, I am, maybe we could, as a starting, please, um, ask for you to. Do a sort of an informal exploration, um, and report back to us, and then we can, we can discuss whether it makes sense to put this on the agenda. And pursue a letter of support, um. For the existing lawsuit or more potentially, so I, I'm, I'd be happy to. Um. See if there's interest from the council to just ask for an exploratory conversation, so we can learn more.
As a first step, you're asking me to just informally contact the district attorney's office to see. Um, what their, what their plans are, as I understand, I understand you to be saying.
That's what I'm saying, exactly.
Okay, I can report back at the next council meeting.
Is everyone cool with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Alrighty. Anybody else? Yes, Deputy Mayor Pappen?
I, I know the hour is late, I just wanted to say that. The extravaganza was amazing, and Park and Rec did a phenomenal job. Uh, the turnout was amazing, and, you know, there's like throngs of kids that come in at different allotted times. I drove by at like seven thirty in the morning, it was pouring rain, and our park and rec folk were out there planting the eggs. Do or die, they knew the weather was going to clear, it was a fantastic community event, and, um. The city's firing on all cylinders when, when we can pull off something like this, and. We're coming out of COVID, it was just a great event with a great feeling, so I, I wanted to give some kudos and congratulations on the park and rec front for that. It was a great, great event.
Good, thank you for saying so, and they deserve all the compliments, any other? Okay, well then, I'm going to take this moment to swing the gavel and say this meeting is adjourned.